Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, June 4th, 2018. Is there a minister in the audience to give a prayer? I don't see one. Glenn, are you willing?
Oh, I guess I'll give it a try. Let's all rise. Dear Heavenly Father, we gather tonight and we thank you for the people in this room, the leaders of our community, and those that are taking an interest in what is best for this community. We ask you give us the wisdom to make decisions that further your work here on earth. In Jesus' holy name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where His stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do it short. Good job, Glenn.
Roll call, please.
Albertson.
Here.
Bueller.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Lalum.
Here.
Manti.
Here.
Roby, absent. Solem.
Here.
Thorson, absent. Vilhauer.
Here.
Y.
Present.
Thank you. I would like to announce that I have appointed Colin Paulson to be the acting city engineer till we find a replacement, so thank you, Colin. He'll be a regular at our council meetings for a while. And Kristen Bobzine is gone, so Chris Crom, the assistant finance officer, is taking her place. Couple new faces at the bench. All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion second for approval? Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilwoman Y. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item two is public comment. This is the time set aside for anyone who wishes to make a comment about something not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to do that? Please identify yourself.
Councilman Adam Lalum. I would just like to say that there are a lot of items that went missing at the lake, including parts of docks and stuff like that, so if you're out there, be careful when you're driving around the lake. You never know what you're gonna run into, so just an FYI, last Friday's windstorm caused some major damage, so make sure that you're careful when you're out boating, so.
Thank you. Yes, good note to make. Anything else? Okay, item number three is approval of the agenda, and before I get a motion, I would like to remove item number six, the action concerning the Boys and Girls Club. We're not ready for that, and I'll just-
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. What did I say?
Six.
Six, twenty-six. And item number nine is not a resolution, but an agreement. With that, I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Moved by Councilman Vilhauer, second by Councilwoman Manti. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Fourth item on the agenda is a presentation by John Livermore about the Emerald Ash Borer, and he has a little helper.
You want me to hold?
Yeah.
I can.
I'll hold.
Ground to the rescue.
Mayor, can I just say a word of introduction-
Sure.
-for John? John is with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture in the forestry division, and I heard a presentation that he made at a Lake Area Zoological Society meeting, what, about a year ago, John?
About a year.
And part of that had to do with the Emerald Ash Borer, and that's been a big topic in the news. There was a front page story on that a couple weeks ago, so with the mayor's permission, I asked if John would come and make a brief presentation, because this is a big topic that, you know, could have some big impact for Watertown at some point, probably not too far down the road potentially. With that, take it away, John.
Yep, so now that we all know that it has been certified, it's been found by AFIS in Sioux Falls, it is now in the state, so it's time to start thinking about management accordingly. One of the things with Emerald Ash Borer is it's a very lazy insect, and so it doesn't move very far, and a lot of times after it emerges, which is about this time of the year, about June. When the adult emerges, a lot of times it'll go right out of the tree into the same tree it's in. And so it doesn't move that fast. Now, the insect itself isn't the problem, we are. The people are what move the insect. Through firewood, nursery stock, pallet lumber, that's basically how it got into the United States in the first place. In terms of management, per each city, municipality is gonna manage it a little differently. I've actually been talking with Jay Delang a little bit about the next step for Watertown, just because it can be a bit of a financial burden when it finally does get here. For the time being, the next step would be to start removing less than desirable ash trees that are in the city, or that are city trees. In other words, anything that's old and in decline, stuff that already has decay, poor form, those are the ones to start removing now. And it's not because we're not really looking to, you know, just get rid of all the ash trees. From a stocking standpoint, we don't wanna see much more than ten percent, and the partial inventory done for the city is approximately thirty-nine percent ash trees, so we are very, very high, and that's normal across the state. But essentially, the removal of the trees now is so you aren't inundated with removals when it gets here. Then there's a twofold issue with that. When Emerald Ash Borer does get here, 'cause it's not a question of if it gets here, it's a question of when. When it gets here, one of the bigger things you're gonna be looking at is removal of a lot of these trees, and the removal of the tree now isn't as dangerous as one that is infected, because as a tree, once a tree is infected, it affects not only the crown, but the root system, and so the whole tree gets really brittle, and there's a lot of companies that, when removal becomes part of the issue, they won't touch them. If there's more than forty percent crown death in a tree, they won't touch them because of the liability and the safety. They can't climb them properly, they can't remove them properly, 'cause they literally just explode, because they get so brittle. It's just the nature of the wood, it's just the nature of the tree itself, so the issue now is remove them. This seems more backwards than anything, is remove them now while they're seemingly healthy, although in this state, I don't know that I've found a healthy tree yet, but we'll find one eventually. But with ash trees, essentially, it's the remove now, so you're spreading out your cost. So even if you're removing ten, fifteen trees a year, that's ten, fifteen trees you're not having to remove later. So the example we give is the city of Aberdeen has started doing it, so the city forester up there, Aaron Keys, that was one of his initial thing, before it even was certified in the state, before it was found in the state, was removing these trees, because he knows that the cost can be incurred, and the cost can range between seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars per tree for removal of an infected tree. If it's not infected, we're looking at approximately five hundred dollars a tree. So A, it's saving you money, and B, it's saving you liability in case there's concern for that. You know, it's one of those things where, for all we know, it's here now, we just haven't found it. But the issue is, from my guess, and this is totally a guess, is it could be twenty years before it becomes so much of a problem for the city of Watertown. So if that's ten trees a year, and it's twenty years, that's two hundred and fifty that you're removing over time, instead of having to do it when it gets here. The other part of the spectrum with this is treatment, 'cause we get a lot of questions. When I first started here in Watertown about three years ago, there was actually someone treating trees for Emerald Ash Borer within the city of Watertown. Not only is that not an issue, we don't need to be doing that yet, it won't be an issue until it's within, until it's been found within fifteen miles. Once it's been found within fifteen miles, then it's time for the city to start thinking about treatment options. It's gonna be cheaper to treat than to remove for a lot of these trees, so like your healthier trees, that's when you look at it and you go, okay, well, this is a good candidate for a treatment tree, and that can be anywhere from, depending on the size of the tree, eighty to two hundred dollars per tree every two years, two to three years. So that's approximately the cost. Now, when you weigh that with the cost of removal and replacement, it's cheaper to treat than it is to remove when the tree is still healthy. But once you have to, once you're removing a tree that's infected, the price for removal skyrockets. From an overall stand health, or for the city tree health, one of the things we look at is that ten percent, and you know, when we're looking at something that's thirty-nine percent, it's not gonna hurt anything to remove a little bit of the stock that's in here. And I mean, you can go on about any street in town, you can find a few that probably need to come down eventually. This is just one push in that step forward to start that removal process. So we've covered removal, we've covered the fact that it's not here yet, that we know of, and that's really been the biggest key. There's gonna be a lot of people asking questions about when I need to start treating, and that's gonna be the biggest thing, not until it's been found within fifteen miles. The other thing we're starting to see is the companies that are doing the treatment are jacking their prices. It's a demand issue, it's a supply and demand issue, so it's one of those things where, if you have the opportunity to quote "lock in a price" with someone while you can, it's probably not a bad idea. City of Sioux Falls is already starting to see that, and it's only been there for not even a month. And they've, they're in the process of developing where they can take their stuff, but at this point, until it's here, I don't really feel it necessary to talk about where stuff needs to go up until that point.
You'd mentioned every two to three years on the treatment.
Yep.
Is that for how long?
For the life of that tree.
Oh, my.
Yeah, because once you stop treating that tree, the insects are always gonna be in that tree, and as you treat, the first year will kill what's in there, the second year will prevent new infestations, the third year is when the infestation starts to essentially get back into that tree again, and then you're trying to prevent that, so it's like two to three years is the give or take. Some communities have stretched that out, and so they'll go, okay, well, we've treated the tree at year one and at year five, so it's an ebb and flow. Okay, well, the tree's hurting, so we treat it, and then they bring it back, and then they wait for it to go back down again before they start treating again. That is a viable option if cost is an issue, but from what our forest health specialist at SDSU, Dr. Ball, he said one to two years, or two to three years, depending on the treatment type, and it's injection, it has to be an injection. There are some soil drenches and stuff like that, and people think that might work, it's not effective for the Emerald Ash Borer. The trunk injection has been really the only thing that we've found to be effective so far.
And now, is that, that's for an infected tree, or if you've got an ash tree and you wanna keep it, you need to treat it?
Correct.
Even if there's no ash borer in that tree?
So, if it's, if you wanna keep that tree alive, it is not only a preventative, but it kills what's in there. So that, and that's the, it's the twofold with that, with the treatment type, is by injection, you are preventing an infestation and killing any infestation that might be in that tree. It's a systematic-
Do you know of any municipalities that actually they're for, like in our case, our forestry people would do that, the city would do that, or is it typically always private companies that do that?
I've not encountered a municipality that does it yet because of liability and because of cost. Because, I mean, even to, even to have, to hire, I mean, it might be in your interest to even hire someone to do the treatment for the city, depending on the duration, but it's one of those things where, you know, even within the city of Sioux Falls, the population has been, it's not, I'm not gonna say contained, 'cause that's not really the right word, but they've really only located it in one area as of now, and they're just gonna be essentially mark, we're gonna be marking the spread to see how fast it spreads. Each city's gonna be a little different, some are gonna spread a little faster, some are gonna be pretty slow. It depends on each city, and it's kinda hard to plan for it when you don't know exactly what it's gonna do.
I have a question about burning the wood. You know, let's say that, let's say if you don't have it, you know, or at least you don't think you do, you cut the trees down, you can burn them in a fireplace, in a fire pit, all that stuff, but if they have it, if it gets to Watertown and somebody cuts a tree down with it, can you burn it in your fireplace? Can you burn it in burn piles type deal?
Quite frankly, that would be the best-case scenario. The biggest issue is moving it. So let's say you are in a city, we'll use Sioux Falls for example right now, you have an ash tree that is suspected to be infested, you cut the tree down, you cut it into firewood, you burn it home, that's great. It's when you then stack some of that wood onto the back of your camper and go up to Wal Bay for the weekend, that's the issue, but if you were to keep it where the tree is, or within a quarantined area, so whether it's within Sioux Falls or within the quarantined area around Sioux Falls, then it's acceptable. Quite frankly, burning it is the best way to get rid of any infestation, is to cut it up and burn it, make it go away.
John, I got a couple questions for you as well.
Sure.
So, let's say we have an area of Watertown that it gets to at some point. We won't pick the northeast, because that's where I live, so it's down here in the south somewhere, but what does the city do then? What do we do in the disposal of those trees when they're taken down? 'Cause we normally, trees a lot of times will go out to our landfill there, and they handle them out there. That's one question. The second one is, we have a lot of little trees, you know, I think of the golf course, I think some of the boulevards over the years that we planted a lot of the small trees, and it seems like if we're gonna have a problem and try to reduce costs, we're almost better off taking those little trees out, don't let them get big twenty years or thirty years from now, take the little trees out, put different breed, or breeds, types of trees in there, and get rid of those small trees as soon as we can, so we minimize our costs. Is that reasonable to think that?
That is more than a viable option. The large trees, the reason why I pinpointed that earlier was, those are the ones that are gonna be the first ones to cause most issues for the city. They're gonna be liability trees, they're the boulevard trees, they're the ones that have essentially a target, they're hazard trees. That's why I pointed on that, and so that's why it's like, you know, this might be the kicker to start removing those now. But from a cost standpoint, if you have a five-inch diameter ash tree that, you know, it's still pretty small, I mean, you could send out part, you know, a part-time staffer to cut it down, you wouldn't even have to dig it out and replace it with something other than that, reducing your count and your species count for ash trees. There are many municipalities that go that route, but you have to do both sides of it. From a stand health, like we were talking about, not only is species diversity important, so is age diversity, so you don't want them to all be the same age. So I mean, yes, that is an option, but you wanna be able to do both, or you probably should do both. Now, the disposal, the city will have to denote a certain area, so once, once a city is under quarantine, so let's say, okay, we've located, I'll give you your same example, only I'm gonna use the north side, okay? We found it in the north side, well, from our standards, Watertown is Watertown, so it will literally account everything within fifteen miles, so whether that means taking all of the ash disposal out to the dump site, that is, that is where it's gonna have to go. The best-case scenario is to chip it, and it needs to be smaller than one by one-inch pieces, and most commercial chippers chip it much larger than that, and so then the next option is to chip it and then burn it. I know that some places have chipped it, and then they spread it out as much as they can, because then it increases the amount of winter kill that happens with the insect that overwinters in those chips. But once it's, once it's here, no matter if it's on the south side or the north side, the big thing is to make sure wherever all of the branches are going, it's all going to the same spot. And then the other part of that is, say you have a block of trees, and the middle one has Emerald Ash Borer, and everything out on the outsides of it doesn't, don't remove all of those trees, because like I said when I, when I started, is that insect is very lazy. It's not gonna go farther than it has to. It might stay on the same tree, it might jump to the next one. If you remove all of the trees within that block, it now has to go find food, and it will do so, and cities, I know Cincinnati had this issue, that was their approach to it, was let's remove anything that's even close to an infected tree, and they increased their, the spread rate tenfold. So it's, as they die, remove them.
Does the beetle, do they, how long do they live in a tree that's been cut down and disposed of in peace? Do they live in that for a period of time, or do they just say, no, it's drying up, dying, and I'm outta here?
The larvae that are in there can overwinter and live for up to two years, so that's why cutting it into as small of pieces as possible is the best option, or burning it.
How do you tell if you have, if you have a tree that's infected, does it start dying?
So there's a couple indicators that we've seen. The first one is canopy thinning, and it's very specific canopy thinning, 'cause we're starting to see that a lot right now, there's some other issues across the state that are all native insect issues, but the big one is canopy thinning with blonding, so essentially what happens is the woodpeckers are trying to find the larvae underneath the bark, and they will peel the bark all the way off the tree. And if you see significant blonding on the ash trees, that's when someone calls me and says, hey, can you come out and take a look at my tree? And I come out and play the part of the, oh, I don't, I don't really know if it's infected or not, and I take samples and then send it off to Dr. Ball to have it certified, because that same reason, we don't wanna spread panic, but the biggest thing is, yes, send us pictures, send us these things, but it takes someone who knows what they're looking for to really see, to really find it. The larvae is a big thing. If you find an adult, it's, that's the smoking gun. But the other thing is the D-shaped holes, the D-shaped exit holes. If you see those on the trunk, that's another one of those very, very good indicators. Now, one of the things that I've, we've always been told is if you think it's D-shaped, it's not, but if it is a crisp D-shaped exit hole, there's a pretty good chance it's Emerald Ash Borer. But there are a lot of little things we gotta look at before we can, before we really start to hone in on it. Even since it was certified, found in Sioux Falls, my phone really hasn't stopped ringing, and I don't have the ability to go to every single tree, so I have people email me pictures or text me pictures, and we go from there, 'cause there's a lot of other insects out there that can be similar, but not the same.
Can I? Now, if you go through, I live in that dreaded south side, okay, so you can go past road after road after road after road, where every boulevard tree, every single tree is an ash tree, you know, and I think we've had people in, that have called and said, they're not gonna cut down the whole block, are they? You know, and what are they gonna put in, and they're concerned about sizes of trees? And I know you mentioned, just take the middle one out, and that makes sense to me, you know, and what kind of trees are being replaced? I'm asking a lot of questions while I have a chance, and so what kind of trees are you using to be replaced? And then also, you said Aberdeen has been doing this for a while, are they growing trees ahead of time so they can put fairly good-sized trees in? I mean, what are some things that we can do so that, once we have to cut down, you know, ten trees on a block, or a two-block period, you know, space, people are gonna say, oh my gosh, we've lost all our shade, you know, that type of thing. So I guess I'm asking, you know, what's the best course then? Ash borer's here, we cut down the center tree, uh-oh, six trees down, there's another one, because like I said, it's all ash. So can you just kinda give us a little idea of what we would do so that, pretty soon, we don't have these streets with no shade? I lived through the Dutch elm in Milwaukee, yeah, and we lost every single tree on every single block, and you know, I have that image in my head, you know, and so I think people would like to know what's gonna happen to their block on the dreaded south side, I know, once their trees have been affected by the borer, other than the options we've talked about.
So, for those that saw Dutch elm, this is the same thing, is we had all elm trees, 'cause they were wonderful and they grew here, had Dutch elm, let's replace them with something, what do we replace them with? Well, this has now come full circle, and we've replaced them all with ash, and so the big thing is, like I said, diversity is gonna be your big thing, and I've been working with Jay in terms of a species list for his, for the parks. The big thing is gonna be location and suitability, and so to give you a list of three species now isn't gonna do you any good, but, but to literally provide, I mean, it'll come down to, the city will have, I mean, I'm sure you have tree ordinances as it is, you know, it'll be, these are the trees you can, you're gonna be able to plant within the boulevards, these are the trees that you can plant under utilities, and that's something I can help develop in the future. The big thing in terms of what you can do is probably starting now. That is, because when it gets here, that's what's gonna happen, is it's gonna go, the whole block is just gonna be decimated.
I know that we have been fairly proactive in taking down some of those trees you were talking about, that, except for the one in my backyard, you guys haven't gotten to that one yet, but, but the, but the look of it is just a whole big area of no trees, because they've all been affected by wet roots and things like that, so they're damaged trees. I would, wouldn't mind having help with a plan of, you know, kind of how to make sure that we re-tree our city in a way that, you know, it should've probably been done without ash tree after ash tree, but also, like I said, I get calls, people saying, you know, they see that on the agenda, Emerald Ash Borer on the agenda, and they're like, are we gonna lose all the trees on our block? And I just, you know, hear some good news about treating and things like that, or losing one tree versus the whole block.
Right.
So-
Yeah, the short answer is, yes, you will eventually lose all those trees. In what timeframe is the bigger question, and how you proactively go about replacing them is the next question. Part of my job is to help cities with this kinda thing, so I would have no problem working with the city to help develop that plan.
Have the nurseries stopped selling ash trees?
They, now that it's been found in South Dakota, they can't have it as nursery stock.
I have a nice little one I just planted recently.
Yep, and it's one of those things where the nurseries, I mean, that's why, that's why I have people talk to me, is because I'm neutral, I'm not trying to make money off of a tree. A nurse, the nurseries, I mean, I'm not knocking the nurseries, but I mean, they're gonna, if they can sell a tree, they're gonna sell a tree, but I've been working with a lot of them to say, hey, you should probably stop, and there are many nurseries in the state that have, and I know the tree farm here in town, they're, just one of the things that they're on their way out, is stop, they can't, you can't keep planting it, and I know places like Walmart, Menards, you're still gonna find them there, because they're corporate, and we really can't stop that, but once city ordinances are involved saying, hey, you can no longer-
Would you recommend that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, no more ash trees.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, in terms of, I mean, you're, you're at a stocking rate of approximately forty percent ash trees. There are cities in the state that are almost up to seventy, you know, and when we're looking at wanting to see ten percent, we're talking a lot of trees.
Yeah, but you're recommending, don't, don't take them all out at the same time, take them-
Little bits-
So there's some age diversity and-
Age diversity and species diversity, and you know, what species, where, you know, and that's to answer those kinds of questions, that's something I can help with in the future.
And this Emerald Ash Borer won't go to a maple tree or something else?
It is very, it is so specific, it will only touch ash trees, and they're, it has to be within the fraxinus genus, so people think it'll go like mountain ash, well, that's a common name, so it's not gonna touch mountain ash.
Oh, good, that's what I have.
Yep, it won't touch that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Won't cut it down.
Yep, don't, don't cut that one down, it has to be within the fraxinus genus, they're very, very specific to that.
Okay. Okay, so don't jump to conclusions. Be careful, maybe consult a.
Yep.
Specialist.
Yep, the big thing right now is for everyone to just take a deep breath. Because we, it's been very panicky the last couple of weeks. Um, you know, probably, that's probably why I'm here. But, uh, um, as long as a plan is developed. Um, you know, the city's not gonna be inundated with cost, and I know that's gonna be probably the biggest thing, is the cost incurred with this.
Well, yeah, like you said, we can spread it out. Get those weak ones first.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Adam?
John, you say there's thirty-nine percent roughly of our tree population is ash?
Approximately.
Do you know how many trees roughly that is? Is it, uh, five thousand, two thousand?
So all we have, we have something called a CTAP report, it's Community Threat Assessment Program. And of course, Watertown being at the bottom of the alphabet. Um, by the time our funding came through. For each community to do this report, to do this inventory, they ran out at the middle of Watertown. And so we only have a partial Watertown inventory done. But in that inventory, it wasn't done in one particular spot in the city. It was done throughout. Um, and that's approximately, and that's why I say it's approximately thirty-nine percent. And my guess is, that's about three to four thousand trees that are ash trees. It could be more. Um, it's one of those things where, um, it might benefit the city to do a proper inventory. To figure out exactly what those numbers are. Um, and I know there are some sub, because even the Department of Agriculture subcontracted out that job. Um, and so instead of having all of our staff doing all these city inventories, they actually had another company coming in and do them for us. Because it's, it's literally just someone on the ground, ping in a tree with a GPS, marking the species. Um, but then that might give, that'll give you a much more accurate number. Uh, to do a, a very in-depth inventory. Because right now, all we have is a very approximate number for the city of Watertown.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? This was very informative. Thank you very much for coming.
But, no problem.
Now Beth, you have to give that baby back. All right, the next item on the agenda is the proposed lease agreement with John and Brenda Yost. For fixed base operator services at the Watertown Regional Airport. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask, um. Matt or Chris to give a little introduction about this. Looks like Matt wins.
Uh, while Todd's not here this evening. Um, but basically this is the, uh, the lease agreement that will replace our previous. Lessie at the, uh, to operate our fixed base operation at the airport.
Uh, Matt, what has changed from the prior lease?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Could you be more specific?
We did change the names, of course, but we actually, I, I will take that back. We did, we did allow in the lease, uh. They had requested that they be allowed to have one or two extra fueling, mobile fueling vehicles. Uh, so we did make the change to allow that in the lease.
Okay, Glenn?
Ma'am, maybe this is a Todd question, but i- i- it's fairly long-term, twenty-four years. Is that fairly typical for a lease of this nature?
You know, I'm, I'm not entirely certain why that, that lease term was chosen last time. Does anybody on the council recall?
And I've got no problem, I just didn't know if that was, if that was a norm for, for a lease of this nature.
So apparently we copied it from the last one.
Correct. Correct.
Which didn't last the full.
Right.
Time. Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Manti and second by Councilwoman Albertson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item, yes, good luck. Item number six is application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to the Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce. Uh, from five PM until nine PM on Thursday, June seventh, two thousand eighteen. For the Wine and Beer Walk Event. And I will open the public hearing and I know we have, um, Tim Sheehan's in the audience. In case there are any questions about the event itself, um. Is there anyone here that would like to speak about this, for or against? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lalum, second by Councilman Billhauer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Can I ask a quick, quick question?
Sure.
Tim, how many, do we have more people participating this year than last year? Or about the same?
It's about the same, I think we have one or two more.
Yeah. Well, you have to say your name.
Yes, I'm Tim Sheehan with the chamber. We do have, I think there's twenty. Um, but I think one of them is just Orion Work For A Shirt and they won't be serving alcohol, you just go up and they can blow. So you can see what your blood alcohol, your breath alcohol content is. I don't know what they call it, blood alcohol when you blow, but, um, just kind of a novelty thing to see what, uh. Uh, your, your alcohol content will be, but that's it. Yep. There's new ones, but the same number, yep.
How many tickets, Tim? Did you, is this event?
We'll sell three hundred, yep, no more than three hundred, because we run out of liquor at that time, hopefully.
Just don't sell any to Bruce. Um, do you have more left?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we do really well, and this is the time, we doubled up today what we had, we had, what we had for the week, so, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday will be big. Yeah, and we, we will sell out, we just do, especially with the weather's gonna be as nice as it is, so. Yes, yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Gonna be awesome. Thanks, Tim. Item number seven is Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-two, annexing Olive Place addition to the municipality of Watertown. Connington County, South Dakota. And I will look for a motion and second for approval.
So, second.
Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Lalum. Um, and Brandy Hatton's here to give us an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. So this goes hand in hand with, um, agenda num- item number eight as well, the annexation and zoning. Um, this is that old tree farm property and I can pull it up here on GIS. That I'm sure you guys are familiar with, as you had the first reading. Um, so the petitioners are Robert and Catherine Yerdegan, and they are the owners of the property. They submitted their application and petition on April thirteenth, requesting approval for the annexation and zoning. Um, and they plan to bring that in as our one single-family residential district. The Plan Commission recommended annexation and zoning to council on May tenth. Um, and then the Park Board recently approved cash and lieu, um, with an additional five-foot easement request on the west property edge. Um, coming to the amount, and so that cash and lieu would come to the amount of five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-six cents. And, um, and that was at the May twenty-ninth meeting. Some other, I mean, adjacent zoning, it's all in line, um. So we have R two on the east and west, and then R three to the north, and then this will be R one. Um, they're planning on just developing it with one, the olive house in, on that property. Which will be six point six four acres being brought in. Um, they're also, they'll be bringing in a plat forward that you guys can anticipate seeing that and, as well as a development agreement.
And the annexation will be automatically rescinded in three years if they don't plat. Any other questions or comments about this? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is ordinance number eighteen dash oh-six, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning Olive Place addition. And I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this, now is the time. And Brandy had already explained the, um, zoning. I don't see anybody, so I'll close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval. Moved by Councilman Lalum, second by Councilman Y. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is the perpetual turnaround easement granted to the city of Watertown for Seventeenth Avenue Southeast. And this is, um, not actually a resolution, but an, um, agreement. So I will look for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the turnaround. Moved by Councilwoman Manti and second by Councilman Solom. Um, do you wanna talk about this a little bit, Colin?
Sure. Um, this is, this is what we've requested and, um, this went through Plan Commission. As well, and they also approved it contingent upon this turnaround easement. Um, this is required for snow removal, emergency vehicles, uh, the general public that will. Could possibly use this down there and then turn around, because, um, we've vacated the, the west portion of this.
And this is being vacated because Terex is going to infringe into the right-of-way, which won't be needed if they're, um, building out there. So, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number ten is the plat of Willow Creek Fourth Edition, Resolution Number eighteen dash twenty-six. Look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Councilman Danforth and second by Councilman Lalum. Uh, Brandy, you wanna tell us about this?
Yep, thank you. So the plat that you have in front of you is Willow Creek Village Fourth Edition. And it also just recently was rezoned, some of the, um, the included portions of their plat. Got rezoned from R three to R one, which is shown up here on the GIS. The petitioner is Donald Endress, and he is the president of Willow Creek Village Fourth Edition. Um, submitted the plat, it'll include eight R one single-family residential lots and two R three multifamily residential lots. Um, currently, like I said here, we went through the rezon process. And then to fulfill the park dedication for this, um, plat. We have the Outlet A, which is down in this area along Willow Creek. And then to, to make it contiguous, and so we're able to record it, they also plotted the Outlet A. And then included an access easement so that, um, either maintenance or people are able to. Cross through the private property to get to the now public park.
I didn't think that outlot was being plotted, it's not included on the plat as in the listing of areas being, um, plotted. We've got, and the areas in Block One are Lot, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And areas in Block Two are one and two, and that's outlot. So, and, and the survey is here, um. Justin Wells, you wanna come up and?
Sure.
Tell us about this. I, I did not include that lot in the calculation for the. Um, prorata share because I did not think it was included with the plat. Because it doesn't say, is not listed on the face of the plat. I see the corners there, but they're all touching other parts of the plat that are being recorded.
Yeah, because it's not setting pins.
Um, the square footage for the Outlet A is actually listed under the title for the Outlet A. Up in the, up on the face of the drawing, not in the, not in the table in the corner.
So it is the intention to plat the Outlet A as part of this plat?
Yes.
Okay, then we need to revise the prorata share, um, which is on another, that will be in the development agreement.
Um, I thought that we were okay with it because they're not subdividing it at this time, that we just left that note in that.
No, it's, if it's being part of the plat, then it needs to happen now, because that's the time to do it. It's when it's being plotted. It'll be replatted with another subdivision in the future. I thought it was just being left out. So, I mean, that's not a big deal. We can do that by a motion, that it gets revised to, um, include that. So. Not a problem. I just didn't realize that was part of the plat. How would you know, Justin? I mean, if you've got a piece of land which is surrounded by pieces that are being plotted, and it completely, you know, hits every corner. How do you know if it's included in the plat or not? It says ten, it, the number of acres probably total somewhere.
Yeah, it does say nineteen, nineteen point seven eight acres and.
And that includes that, so if you did the math, it would work out, right? I didn't do the math.
And it is shaded, shaded in solid in the vicinity map. As part of the.
True, true, good point. I did not catch that. Okay. Uh, no, because it's part of the plat. I just, um, the development agreement will be a separate action. And then we'll have to make a comment about that, but, so. Thank you. Would you have a motion? Is there any more discussion?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
It, it's from the city standpoint at this point, for the land that's being dedicated for the park dedication. Is there, is there a plan for that at this point, or is it just something in the future where we're saying? Let's, let's get that, because I think it's undevelopable from them anyway. Is that, it, I'm just trying to understand where that's.
I don't think there's a written plan, other than it's a nature area and they had ideas of, um, doing a bridge someday. And extending the bike path.
Okay.
Down to it so people can have access to the creek.
So from, at least from their standpoint, they've had some strategic, high-level looks at that.
And the, the Park Board, I don't know, I wasn't there for their discussion if they were, um, talked about that.
And this one was approved in twenty thirteen, but I believe that the plan for this whole Willow Creek area would be to extend. Um, a walkability park throughout all of this. I'll, I'll buy it.
It isn't intended to be mowed or anything like that. It's in a natural state now and I don't think it's being mowed. Um, so we won't be planting it with Bermuda grass or anything like that.
We should put some ash trees in there, I think.
It's a, it's more so that we're just trying to reserve the land, so that they are meeting their park dedication requirement.
Is it gonna be usable all the time, or is this a flood area?
Um, it is within the flood plain, um, but this, it's not all encompassed by the floodway, so there is potential for some development. I mean, parking lots, bike trail, things of that nature.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eleven is authorization for the mayor to sign a development agreement for the plat of Willow Creek Village. Fourth Edition with Willow Creek Development, Inc., and I would, um, add the caveat. That the, um, prorata share part of the development agreement is verified to be correct. Before the plat, the documents are recorded. Will someone make that motion?
I'll make, second.
Motion by Danforth and second by Lalum?
With your caveat.
Yes, thank you. Um, any questions or discussion? Anything you wanna point out about the development agreement, Brandy, that's unique?
Um, I did have a few highlights. So, we do have in there about the park dedication, that they're dedicating Park Outlet A. Of Willow Creek Fourth Edition to meet its park dedication requirement after the Park Board's decision to accept that donation of land on June twenty-fifth, twenty thirteen. And then also, as the mayor had alluded to, that the. And then also, as the mayor had alluded to, that the developer agrees to pay the pro-rata share of the cost recovery for land acquisition associated with the implementation of the Willow Creek Tributary's drainage master plan prior to the recording of the plat. This has been calculated to be $4,520 and eleven cents, but is subject to change based on Consumer Price Index at the time of plating.
And also adding that one lot.
Yeah, and then...
Which is a huge lot.
Yeah, yeah. And we will, will verify that it's correct.
Yeah, that, that one lot is bigger than everything else combined, so that'll be, that'll make a difference. I hope the developer is okay with that. That totally just went past my radar, I took it off, even wrote the note, "not included."
Well, I thought that we were going to wait until it was re-subdivided, but we can verify.
We've been doing every single one of these as soon as they plat, and that was what the council authorized in 2004. So, that's what we've been doing, we haven't postponed it on any of them. It's just hard, if it's been platted, to remember to go back when they replat, it's just easier to catch it on the first time around.
Yeah.
It will have an impact on that dollar amount, though. Glenn?
Can somebody explain me, because I have, I guess this is the first time I've seen this, can somebody explain what the, the pro-rata share of land acquisition cost is, I mean...
I'd be happy to.
Please.
Okay, all up and down the corridor, the city purchased ponds and creek along with land next to it. The unnamed, it's, it's an unnamed tributary to Willow Creek. There was a study done probably fifteen or twenty years ago about how to manage the drainage in this undeveloped corridor, and the council looked at alternatives and how to manage it. This includes that, what we call Cherry Creek, which runs next to Cherry Drive, that's tributary. That land that the creek flows through was purchased with taxpayer dollars between, I think the earliest purchase was the year 2000 through 2004, or around in that time range, and the, the dollar amount spent was all calculated out and determined by the council that it would be recovered as the adjacent plats occurred up and down the watershed. So, as soon as land plats or develops, if it's already platted land and they come in for a building permit, if they haven't paid their pro-rata share, we collect it from them, and we're gradually getting back hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city spent to purchase. That, those lands were not donated to the city, we bought them. And so, everybody that drains to the tributaries or to the ponds is paying their pro-rata share of the cost to acquire the land. So, that's why we call it pro-rata share, and it's just, you know, each development is a tiny little piece. The council did adopt a policy to do that, and the dollar amount is inflated along with the Consumer Price Index so that we're getting actual dollar to dollar, because it's been a long time. And, you know, what the money was back then compared to what it was, what it is now is... So, in the total value of the land acquisition in 2006 was $722,000. That's what we paid in tax dollars to purchase all this land, and the current value is $889,000. So, that's based upon the Consumer Price Index. So, every, all in that green area is what we're collecting back, tributary to the land that we purchased. And so, some of that green is not tributary, like this little park that was platted tonight. Flows, the runoff from that flows directly to Willow Creek, and we did not acquire anything between that land and the creek. So, there's no pro-rata, pro-rata share on that piece. But if it drains back to the pond or into one of those corridors that we purchased, they pay back the city. So, we put the dollars up front, and they're paying us back. And that was at the same time that the city council made a decision to leave that corridor open and undeveloped, and they looked at the alternatives of enclosing the drainage, which is what a lot of people would like to do. That was one of the alternatives that was considered, it was probably the most expensive alternative. And we knew that at the time, it would have, you know, been probably another million dollars to the cost of managing this corridor, and the, the city council decided at that time to leave it in an open state, knowing full well that people would complain that it's a wetland and that, you know, they want it mowed and they want it filled in and enclosed with a pipe. So, we got to remind ourselves throughout time of the council's original intent for that land, which was to have a natural corridor that has wetland benefits of cleaning the water and flood control benefits, those sort of things. Yep, right, good question, Glenn. Any other questions or comments? I did get a motion, right? We have one, talk too much. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number twelve is the plat of East Side Edition, resolution number eighteen dash twenty-seven. Look for a motion, second. Moved by Councilwoman Manti. Second by Councilman Lalum. And Brandy, you want to tell us what this one is?
Yep, thank you. The petitioner is Rex Gerber, the representative for East Side Investments LLC and the owner of the property. Here on the GIS that you guys are looking at, we're talking about these two previously platted lots are now owned by the same developer, same owner. So, he's just replating it to move a utility easement to the back of his property because how the easements were currently platted, they broke it up, making this back portion of the property unusable. So, he's just going through the process, there's no infrastructure improvements, which is why we're not, we didn't include a development agreement, but just because we are moving a utility easement and relocating it, that, that's why you guys are seeing it.
Brandy, is there going to be issues with that, is there any utilities running in there now?
They have been working with Watertown Municipal Utilities, and they, there was, there was over, overhead lines, and then now they're putting them underground on the back property line.
And there is a little piece, a much smaller utility easement being retained, ten feet or something, right?
Yep, yep.
And where was it before, if you could kind of point it out?
So, when this, this used to be old railroad property, so then there was an easement along that property line there.
Okay.
And then, so now they are moving it to run here on the back side of it. So, then they're able to, you know, use that property.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is the first reading of ordinance number eighteen dash oh eight, amending the zoning district boundaries for a portion of Lot Three and Four of North Ridge Edition. And there's no action required on this, just a first reading, so Brandy, you want to explain what it is?
Yep, thank you. The petitioner on this rezon application is Travis Mog, and he is the owner of the property. So, he's looking at selling this property, and when he came in to ask some questions, it does have two zoning designations. So, we have C two, which is local commercial district, and then C three, which is highway commercial. And he would like to rezon it so it's all able to be used for C three highway commercial. Currently, there's a car wash as a use on the property, and I do not believe that they plan to change the use. Just want to know, or they just want to make, I guess, yeah, consistent or having, having one zoning designation to adhere to.
Is there an issue with the neighbors at all to the east, or in a different zoning?
Um, I did not hear from those adjacent neighbors, but I did from the north and the west, and they don't have any issues. It's still, the C two does still allow for some transition zoning, so...
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Brandy. Item number fourteen is authorization for the mayor to sign a petition for vacation of the right-of-way abutting the Watertown Regional Landfill to the west, 456th Avenue. And so, I'll look for a motion, second for approval.
So, moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Manti and second by Councilman Albertson. And this is, the city would be signing the petition for vacation. We would not be vacating this because it's not in the city limits, but we own the landfill, which has the right-of-way adjacent to it. So, we are an adjacent property owner, and in order for that to be vacated, 100% of the adjacent property owners have to sign the petition. And so, that is, yet we're, we're not 100%, but we, what's that? The city has no issue with this. The city being, this is our landfill, this, this doesn't harm our landfill in any way to have this done, and the property owner on the other side, same, they just like to farm right up to the property line. Matt, do you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything to add, mayor. Mike, Mike came in and dropped this on my desk, he could speak more intelligently to it, but Mike's not here this evening, so... He, he seemed to think it was a great idea, though, so...
I got that drift from him, too. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number fifteen is consideration of application for a sidewalk café for Tommy's Lanes. And this would be including the entire right-of-way from Kemp Avenue to the south boundary of Tommy's Lanes, projecting across the right-of-way, and I, hopefully, we have a, a map on, that you can bring up in the agenda. So, you can see what we're talking about here, the very last, okay. And I'll look for a motion, second for approval, and we can talk about it. Moved by Councilman Danforth, second by Councilman Y. All right, a sidewalk café permit normally would just include the, the sidewalk, but the city council has the ability to extend that café permit out to include the whole right-of-way, which is what was included in the motion here, because the intention of this is to use it for Thursday Night Live. So, the showmobile would be set up in the same location that it has been in years past, just on the south side of Kemp Avenue in Maple. And so, then everything south of the showmobile, down to the south boundary of Tommy's Lanes, would be in the sidewalk café. And in years past, it was the sidewalk café of the GOS that was being used for this event, but they're not open. So, Tommy's already had a liquor license, they didn't have a sidewalk café. So, if this is approved, they will have a sidewalk café, and the council will have extended it from not just the sidewalk, but to include the entire right-of-way. There, we go, one more page, one more page.
So, the GOS already had that?
One more, one more. Right there, okay, that one.
So, there's already a sidewalk café allowed from the corner to the end of the GOS?
To the bottom of the GOS, right, but they don't have the ability to serve liquor there.
Okay.
So, we needed somebody with both a sidewalk café and an active liquor license.
So, will people be able to walk between the two of them?
Yes.
And there's no issue with that?
Right. Right, Matt?
They can walk between the two, oh, really?
Not inside, on the sidewalk.
I mean, the sidewalk café will start on the south end of Tommy's and go all the way to Kemp, right?
It's already on there for the GOS area?
No, this, well, this side, so the GOS is no longer in operation currently. So, this sidewalk café permit will include the area that was previously encompassed by the GOS's sidewalk café permit.
Can they do that when they don't own that other property?
It's already in existence, right?
The sidewalk café runs with the land, right?
Wait, what, which property?
With the GOS property, they have a sidewalk café
Right.
allowed, but they're not in business anymore, so it's staying in effect.
Currently, it's not in effect.
This is, this is our right-of-way, though, the, the GOS doesn't own the right-of-way.
Yeah, the GOS doesn't own the land, we own the land, yeah.
So, your, your motion is all of the right-of-way?
I'm just making sure from a legal side that we, they can go all the way up.
I don't know that it matters that they had a sidewalk café.
So, the sidewalk café is allowed within the property lines of the business going out, and as a council, you can authorize a, basically, an extension of that.
Okay.
And so, this would go from the south end of Tommy's up to Kemp.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure we're okay with.
Right, right.
We're not using one person, it's not a business, it's somebody else's.
Right, yep, so this has nothing to do with the GOS at all, this will be Tommy's sidewalk café permit, yep.
Okay.
Mayor, does this pertain only to the Thursday Night Live thing, or, or could they have tables and chairs out there like the other locations do now?
That's a really good question, Mike, I can't answer that. I, I don't know that they'd ever want to set up in the middle of the street.
Well, I'm talking about on the sidewalk, this specifically says sidewalk.
Oh, this, this sidewalk café would not be just for Thursday Night Live, for Tommy's. Tommy's will now have a sidewalk café permit, and it won't be, he can put tables and chairs out there.
He could be out there now if he wanted to.
Yes.
And my only point in bringing that up, and it really isn't with Tommy's, but we have very, very low standards in what a sidewalk café is and how it looks, and I've been into a number of other communities that look, you could tell their standards are much higher. We need to take a look at that part of our ordinance, and we need to raise the bar. Ours, there are many of ours that look just terrible, and we're better off not having them than we are to look like we do in certain cases. I would just like that to be looked at from a, a staff at a council standpoint, matter of record.
And I think even some minimum standards can make it look really nice and not cause a physical, or a financial burden on the business owner, having the white chain versus rope and having poles versus spools, you know, industrial spools. So, I think that Mike's point is really well-taken to work with them on that.
Yes. Any other, any other comments or questions? All right, let's make sure I'm not skipping something. Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number sixteen is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group, Inc. for the Lake Compeska Final Loop Trail Improvements Phase One. So, I'll look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Vilhauer, second by Councilman Lalum. And I see Vanessa Victor from Infrastructure Design Group is here, and Jay Delang, the park director, is here. So, I will let you folks tell us about this.
Well, as you know, for the past several months, infrastructure has been doing a design and review for the remainder of the trail around Lake Compeska, it's about 3.7 miles in length, and that is coming to an end. They are going to give a final presentation Friday evening, and so that'll be really, really exciting. I think it is nearly, nearly finalized, got a couple more people to talk to, but coming along real good. And the proposal before you tonight is to take the next step and actually put some trail, start plans to put some trail on the ground around Lake Compeska. This would involve the east side of the trail, and it's exciting, it has been recommended by the Park and Rec Board, and I'll let Vanessa describe it a little further.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, council. The response that we got for the trail project was actually just phenomenal, well-received by everybody around the lake. Everybody wants the trail. Not necessar, not necessarily, everybody doesn't want it in their front yard, but everybody wants the trail. We had commented, compared to other communities, that the community support and the public outreach has been highly well-attended. So, I feel like the trail that we all unveil on Friday is a well-received plan, that people feel that they have buy-in. Now, we're looking at the next phase, and that's the logical question, well, now you have a plan, when is this going to happen? We're too late in the design season to get anything done yet in this calendar. We're too late in the design season to get anything done yet in this calendar year, but we could hit the ground running pretty well in the beginning of 2019. So we're looking to start design now so we can get actual survey out. The plan was based off of your LiDAR photogrammetry data, which is two-foot contours. It gives us a pretty good idea, but, you know, there's still some fine-toothed contour and elevation data that we need to figure out. And then we'll have bid-ready plans by December. So hopefully, get constructing first part of next spring.
Excellent. And Jay, we have the money and the budget, right?
Yes, in our two twelve account for recreational trails. We, we do have, I would say, after the projects we have in place for this year, we should have about six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars remaining. So we got a nice nest egg to start this project out.
Great. Councilman Danforth?
So what are we actually committing to here? If we haven't, if we, if we haven't seen the, the plan that you said is going to get laid out on Friday? Friday where, by the way?
At the event center at six o'clock.
Okay. So if we haven't seen that, and it, so does this just, is this for a segment of the design of what needs all be completed?
Yes.
And then what's the accompanying estimated dollars of that? Is that what we have budgeted for? So those two match up?
They do. So behind the scenes, we've had project advisory meetings. Basically, the trail, the three point seven miles to complete the trail has been divvied up into four different phases. And we're trying to use the available funds as wisely as possible. When we go to federal highway, no different than when I talked to you about bridge projects and federal highway projects, there's, there's rules. There's a lot of rules on how you purchase land. There's a lot of rules on how you purchase easements. There's rules on mailboxes, not. So we tried to find segments where the funding would fit. So the first phase that we are laying out is by Pampaska Drive and basically takes us to the southern region of the trail. And that's the first phase before we get into wetlands, which wetlands would create a need for additional time for just permitting. So we wanted, we want to make an impact and really get some trail constructed. So that would be a logical phase two. Phase three would be primed for federal highway or game fish and parks grant money to apply. And there's a process involved with that. But there's not a lot of encroachments. It's a pretty easy stretch and it looks good on paper for, for funding. And so that funding process also takes like three years if we choose to proceed that, with that right now. And then the fourth phase is actually by Parkview Drive, which will be striping shared path on the existing roadway, which engineering has agreed that that road actually needs to be redone anyway. So we'll just do that all as one. So it is a pretty collaborative effort of trying to utilize your dollars as wisely as possible.
I'm sure, sure what we're signing up to here.
Yeah, I'm trying not to get the cat out of the bag. The formal unveiling is really on Friday, but I understand the need for more information.
And this contract is thirty-nine thousand eight hundred seven twenty, right?
Yes. Nice one.
Councilwoman Billhauer?
It's maybe not an appropriate question to ask in light of what we're acting on tonight. But as you go through your various phases, wh- and the fourth phase is the Parkview Drive area. Where does that leave us as far as a little segment of Memorial Park where it ends before it gets to Parkview Drive? Is that part of that fourth phase? There was some talk about maybe trying to get that done sooner rather than later.
On Friday. Yeah. Well, well, Glenn, you were pretty active in the project advisory committee. The numbers are just that, they're numbers. So if engineering has in their, their budget to jump on phase four in 2019, then maybe we get two segments done at the same time. It's just, it's a matter of their budget, your budget, and his budget and how it all comes together. But just trying to logically look at it from a funding standpoint, which made more sense.
Are you specifically asking about that little snippet of fifty feet or whatever it is?
In Memorial Park, right.
Yeah.
Do you know, Jay, are we going to throw some asphalt on that?
Not in the plans right now. We were, you know, I was kind of thinking that would go with the Parkview Drive work when, when we did that, is what we were talking about at the committee level.
So you'd put that with that phase of it?
Yeah.
And, and I'll just say, I used to take that route with my bike even before it was paved. It's beefed-up section of sewer access road with grass growing on it. So very firm, hard surface without asphalt on it. So it isn't like you come to the edge of the asphalt and you have to get off your bike and carry it through the swamp to get to the road. It's, you know, it isn't ideal maybe, but it's also not terrible. Councilwoman Lalum?
Vanessa, you said from Pampaska, I would take that to the south and along South Lake Drive. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes. Well, from Pampaska, we're.
Where the trail ends.
Here's a kind of. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
I'm just trying to visualize where.
We are actually going through a cornfield. This was also a part of the public, like I said, everybody really likes the trail, wants the trail. Nobody wants it in their backyard. Ideally, we try to avoid putting trails in cornfields. However, from a safety aspect, it's phenomenal. The people who own this land are all about the trail, believe that they would like to develop it eventually and it adds value to their property. The whole idea, however, about a trail around the lake is that people can see the lake. But even if you continue on South Lake Drive, there, those lots are so long that you really can't see the lake from the roadway anyway.
And there's a pretty big hill up.
Yeah. So it's actually this area right here, which is the, the trickiest part for us to design around. We are actually cutting it back about fifty feet from where it currently ends to pu- pick up the trail because there's also a huge hill right here.
And that would go down like the Fourth Avenue, roughly? Is that like phase one? I'm just trying to.
Yes. Um, phase one ends right here.
Okay.
So. And then, right here, we start with our wetlands.
Yeah.
You see Fourth Avenue on the map there?
I, I do.
Sorry, this is, I should have brought eleven by seventeen, I apologize.
So are we going to cut through someone's yard?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody who has been impacted beyond the right-of-way on this project has been talked to. So if, if we're putting the trail in the right-of-way, you might not have gotten a personal visit, but if we're extending behind, beyond that right-of-way, you, you got to see me in your driveway. So. And that did slow up the process a little bit just because we have people that, they're cabins, so.
And it's going to cut across, it's going to be on the west side of South Lake Drive then? Or are we, we're cutting across and then coming back on?
Yes.
Across again, so we're going to have two points where we have to cross.
Two points of crossing. That's more to, we're going to get an access easement from Arnold Construction. And he is on board with crossing there. But wouldn't like people crossing behind all of his sheds with all of his building equipment and random. And really, when you get right here, you have some site issues.
Yeah, where the water tower is.
Yep. So it's not an opportune point to, to cross. And crossings in general aren't ideal. We have, if you compare to the trail that is out there right now, we have minimized the numbers of crossings for this section by about half.
And as they both alluded to, we are trying to figure out if we can incorporate a pro- an engineering project and a trail project together to lessen the burden on just the trail funds and see if we can incorporate both.
Yes, that's, that's great. Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen is authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with the Watertown School District for use of the swimming pool at the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. Look for a motion, second for approval. Moved by Councilwoman Manti, second by Councilwoman Beulah. Any, well, let's see, who's going to talk about this? Jay, are you going to tell us about this? Oh, Terry is, Terry Kelly.
Any questions? Um, what this is, is when we built the wellness center, we're in the process of reviewing all user agreements, lease agreements. That used to be pertaining to the rec center, now transferring to the wellness center. This agreement, we found, went back from nineteen eighty-five, has never been touched. It's been a twenty thousand dollar lease. Since that point, based on the fact that we've increased our costs four hundred and twenty-five percent on utilities and four hundred and seventy-five percent on chemicals to maintain the pool, we felt that our thirty-three years of non-inflationary factor was time to approach the school for a little more assistance and truly the, the product that we're giving them. They were very open, they understood, very easy negotiation. Where the number came from was a one percent annual inflationary factor, which was definitely below the C, the Consumer Price Index. You don't want to know what the actual number was, but we did one year or one percent based on thirty-three years came out to about twenty-seven thousand. It's not completely written in the agreement, but we're kind of the under assumption we'll do a one percent annual inflationary factor as well. So that's where the twenty to twenty-seven thousand came from and the school is very much in the support and understanding of it.
All right. Councilman Danforth?
Terry, why don't we tie it to the CPI? I mean, we've got, we're going to, we're going to continue to fall behind in the value of the product that we give them in a brand-new facility. Our costs are going to go up on average higher than the one percent, there's no question about it. Why don't we tie it to something that everybody understands and it, it enables us to keep up with inflation?
Uh, you know, with, we're at year one with the, the ex-rec center, wellness center under the umbrella of the Park and Rec Department. And I think you're right, you know, thirty-three years going without reevaluating a, an agreement was, was an oversight. And what we've tried to do with our new agreements is write them in the lease agreement to have, to have a true CPI inflationary factor. I think, Mayor, we did that maybe for the Lake Area Tech. When I think we discussed using CPI, you know, on a, on a three-year basis. We don't every year nickel and dimwit, but every three years, it'll renew to what that three-year CPI was. This is a starting point to at least get us to where we feel the fair market dollar is for the value of the pool. I mean, it comes down to, we, we've got up to a hundred hours that they're allowed. So really, two hundred and seventy dollars per hour is actually fitting within our, our normal rental agreement for the entire facility. But to your point, one percent annual, you know, at this rate, that's two hundred and seventy dollars next year. That probably won't meet the true inflationary factor of what chemical costs are, utility costs, staffing costs, things like that. But that can be renegotiated in the lease agreement before you, since both parties can come back together and renegotiate this. But we just don't want to do this annually, have to sit both parties down to come up with that number. And that's where I like the fact that we do have an inflationary number written in the lease agreement. So every year, when we do a billing for it, we know what it is.
But we're billed it in a one percent?
At this point, yes, it is one percent. But as a count, I mean, that was the proposal to school. If you look through the lease agreement that the school presented to us, it just says both parties will renegotiate as needed. So really, it's not written in this current lease agreement within your packet.
This is just a one-year lease?
This is a one year at this point.
So are you thinking by next year, we'll have an inflationary factor in a longer term?
I think with Councilman Danforth's comments, I think that definitely should be reflected and have the conversation at least.
Yeah, there's, you know, we're, we're over a year into this building. You know, they're through one, over one school season into the use of the facility, right? And we know, we know that our costs are a lot higher than what we projected as far as utilities and such. We've also been there, spent a lot of time there when, when those, those kids from the middle school or whenever are coming in there. There is a, a fair amount of activity, which is great to see, but there's also a fair amount of cost that goes with it from a maintenance and cleaning and caring for the facility, wear and tear. I just think it's so much easier. Inflation's inflation. If there isn't any, great. If there is a CPI index that, that we can tie it to, it's the best way to do it because it has a standard we can use. There are real costs to us. So the quicker, I shouldn't say quicker. The sooner we realize that in, in cases like this, that we, we build these things and we understand why we build them in, the less apt we ought to have a thirty-three-year pause of not addressing an issue as far as our costs are concerned.
And I think within the, you know, within the Park and Rec Department and all the leases we have, you know, from all the associations to schools to everything else, you know, where you need to sit down is at, at least a committee level to bring the board to recommend to the council to standardize that practice. You know, that, that may be anything from Lake Area Tech memberships to the soccer association using the fieldhouse. Instead of renegotiating these with different numbers pulled out of the air, we have a standard policy that we base it on CPI on a, on an annual basis. Would make the most sense. And we can definitely take that at, at a committee level to the Park and Rec Department to come to you with, with the proposal to present to all these groups.
So a year from now, th- this council, who's ever on this council, will have another agreement in front of them. Because we won't remember to call Terry or Jay and say, I think it's been a year, we should look at it, right? Is that correct?
I'm going to quick, just look at the final terms on the. Matt, did you have anything, this was sent to us, correct, from the school attorney? Do you recall? I'm just quick glancing for terms here.
It was not sent, it was not sent to me.
It's a one-year agreement?
It is, it is a one-year term. So, yes, we will have to come back to you. Hopefully, that term, we can use, Matt, to renegotiate our own language with, with CPI, which makes the most sense to me.
It does, okay.
It's a, it's a number that no one can argue with.
As long as, right now, it's going to come back to us and I'm okay. But it, just a recommendation going forward, we need to take a look at that. And it's not, you know, anything that we do, it's not just Park and Rec. But if anything we got to do where we do have these leases where we should, where we have costs or income, we should have something in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, just two little, little things here. When we signed the contract in nineteen eighty-five, the aquatics portion of utilities, we spent forty-seven thousand dollars. Last year, we spent two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's the difference, you know, and chemical costs from the pool in nineteen eighty-five was twenty-eight hundred. Last year, we spent sixteen thousand. So obviously, you know, those are the four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and seventy-five percent inflationary numbers we gave you.
So eight times twenty is a hundred and sixty thousand, if.
Yeah, and that's why I said, you know, we, we use the CPI calculator, you know, where you can punch in the number of, what's twenty thousand dollars in eighty-five versus? And I won't bring that number up. And I don't think Rick Holm wants me to bring that number up.
So was there a valid agreement? Or was it a one-year agreement from nineteen eighty-five that we, we just kept receiving their twenty thousand dollar check every year?
The way the previous lease looked correct, that it was signed without a term limitation. It just, basically, both parties, it auto-renewed unless either party gave a sixty-day notification.
So we weren't out of compliance with it?
No, no, it was an auto-renewal contract.
It was auto-renewing?
Yep, until both parties. And at this point, both parties, or at least our party, came to them and said, we would like to at this point renegotiate. So.
Okay. Other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number eighteen is consideration of proposal for Great Plains sponsorships. And, um, let's see. We have, we have an agreement in the packet. Is that one, we had a different one to hand out, right?
No, th- this is what we're looking.
This is, okay.
Yeah.
The one in the packet is good, then. And I think, um, I see Ryan's here. I see Ryan's here, and are you wanting to talk about this?
Um...
Before we make a motion?
Okay, I, I, I'll, I'll make the motion, um, but I guess you, Matt, you've gotta tell me as far as what makes this legally binding, 'cause we don't have a contract as such here, but, but I will make the, the motion just to get the conversation on the floor uh, to, uh, to, to go with option A, which includes the early option, the early out option and the prorated monthly option. It is what I'm, what I would make the motion that we, uh, consider entering into.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Vilhauer and a second by Councilwoman Nanty for, uh, option A, continuation of the current terms, um, with the early out and a prorated monthly payment. Um, all right, and now I guess it's open for discussion.
I guess with that, I, I would invite Ryan, if you wanna step forward, there's a couple of us that, that have not met you uh, over the course of past year. Bruce, uh, Mike, Don, Roby and I have worked most closely with you as well as the mayor. But I guess we'd like to hear, uh, your comments, your thoughts as far as the past year and, you know, where you suggest or what you see, uh, potentially in the relatively short term going forward if we do extend your contract.
Sure, uh, and thank you for having me. I think we're, we're looking at now is we, I, I basically propose another three months. Or one quarter for, uh, us to consult particularly with the softball complex, um, in, in play now. And so where we're at with the wellness center is we've secured two partners, um, and have another two that are to be announced. Um, and so total, those four partners equate to about two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in revenue. Some of that is in-kind trade dollars with vast. Um, my goal to just kinda keep it succinct for this explanation is, my goal would be to have two more partners announced at the wellness center, so have six total sponsors to complement the naming rights that, that are already in place. And then to find five partners for field naming rights at the First Premier Softball Complex. So, in total, um, the target revenue between the two facilities, um, beyond what's already been generated would be around three hundred and fifty thousand, so, a hundred thousand roughly would be the target goal for the wellness center. And then the target revenue for sponsorships at the Premier Softball Complex would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, net revenue. So, um, as far as the investment from the city to us, that would be twenty-five thousand over the next quarter. And, so, you know, we'd be looking at a total of a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five thousand over the course of our entire term. And if we were able to hit these targets, which we're on track to, and I think, um, these are all realistic and in some cases conservative numbers, maybe get to be over four hundred thousand dollars in net revenue as far as sponsorships for these city-owned facilities.
I, I guess a question that I would have, because there was some discussion at the Finance Committee meeting last week, Ryan, and, and you're aware of that, and we, uh, we discussed it briefly. It, it's a matter of how realistic you feel like the potential revenue is at three hundred and fifty thousand that you're referring to now. Uh, and, and some concern entering into a guaranteed contract versus some sort of commission base which you would provide it to us in, in option B. Um, I, I guess why don't you just speak to that? Because I, I mean, obviously if we're commission-based, it'd actually be to your benefit if we were to realize the revenues that you're, uh, that you're projecting. But I guess I'd just like to have you speak to, you know, realistically, I mean, just kinda sound you out as far as, you know, what, why we should enter into a guaranteed contract based upon what your projected revenues are.
The, well, between the two options, those are, at the end of the day, if you calculate out what would it be if we hit the target revenue, I mean, it's, it's somewhat comparable if you do commission versus you do the guaranteed. I, the, I guess the reason I would encourage, I, I guess I wouldn't encourage either, that's why there's options for your guys' sakes. So that way, if, if, if you wanna say, hey, the only way we wanna, you know, give any dollars away is if we're getting dollars, I understand that. And if there's also a point where we say, hey, you've consulted for, for a year and, and gone through all, we've gone through this big consultation evaluation process. We've developed the pipeline and a lot of the things that I sent out, um, over this past week to kinda show what's been done over the past year. And now we kinda want the, you know, we'll pay for whatever you, you generate. Either, either option makes sense to me, um, and, and I think makes sense for the city. When it comes down between the two, uh, I, I guess I don't, I don't know if I would lobby for either, uh, one over the other. Um, we've been on a quarterly, uh, basis, so I think that with just a straight retainer, if we did that for one more month, that would keep things exactly how they've been, it wouldn't, it would just be more of an extension than a renewal.
Give me one, one more quarter.
One more quarter, yes, sorry. So, I, I, it's hard for me to, that's, I give the options, just like I gave in the, a year ago, for, for this, for you guys to be able to choose of what, what makes sense, especially now that another project's coming into the mix, um, which is ready to launch or go to market, or however you wanna word it at any, any point now, so. Uh, you know, there, I think one thing that we, I've discussed, discussed in the past too, is if there's any concern on the commission front of, hey, you know, you already have two or three of these sponsors at the wellness center locked in, we don't wanna pay you commission on those. Those are ones that we would identify before entering another quarter and say those are not gonna be commissioned to make sure that there's no, no one being hold back that would get, you know, double paid on or anything like that. We would make sure we could avoid that, and those type of sponsors, we could be identifying and say, hey, we already know that those are on their way to becoming a partner. We're not gonna pay you as part of a commission if you guys were to choose that route.
I feel like the, um, intention is, I mean, if people wanna continue with you, what happened was, um, far short of the expectations due to probably a lot of things that were beyond your control. But the fact of the matter is, we didn't get nearly as much money as we were hoping to get. And, um, we don't have any money in the budget right now to pay another quarter. And I don't know where that money would come from. If you were working on strict commission, I know where that money would come from. It would come out of the proceeds. But if we don't have any proceeds, I guess it's a risk that the council will have to decide if they wanna take. I personally feel like it should be a commission basis because you're a salesman and you have other clients. And some of those clients are probably on commission. And so if, if you're torn between how you're gonna spend your time and we're giving you the money whether you produce or not, I don't know if that's true of your other clients, and it comes down to the end of the quarter, you're gonna, you know, do what you need to do for yourself. And that, that makes me nervous, and it would make me nervous no matter who was at the other end of the contract. Um, so I guess I, I would strongly recommend a, a commission-based contract, but that's not an option here. And think about where the money's gonna come from, from this flat fee for the next quarter, 'cause...
But Mayor, you know, uh, 'cause you have two options in here, right?
Yeah, neither is total commission.
Right, that technically you said that's not, it probably is an option.
It could be an option, yeah.
We would just need to have that, uh, you know, presented to us as what that, what that total amount would be. And I, before I go on to that, I do wanna say too, and, and our expectations were much higher, and, and without question. We know what those hurdles have been this, over this last year. And I, I don't see those as Ryan's, uh, issues, I think, just things that just, we had to sort out, and I think we're through those and, and, uh, moving forward. So, um, Ryan, have you calculated, if we took, let's just use your number, right? The, the five fields, the two, uh, potential sponsors at the wellness facility. Have you taken that number, I think you said, potential of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? How does that, if you were to, to be successful with those, how does the, uh, B option in here, how does that relate in total dollars, 'cause you got a, a part, a retainer amount plus a commission? How does that total dollar equate to the prorata? And what do you think it would be if it was all commission-based? If I took the three dollars, three, the three options with the same success, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what's my cost, what's my cost, what's my cost?
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if I can do the math that quick, but I can tell you, uh, I, it would take me a second. But if, if, if the number's as targeted, so if we, if, if we have two hundred and seventeen thousand now that have been generated and we're, and as, on record again saying, uh, some of that is, a hundred thousand of that is in-kind dollars that I negotiated as part of a vast agreement, but there's two hundred and seventeen and a half thousand dollars that are going to the wellness center now. If we got another one hundred thousand plus another hundred, or two hundred and fifty thousand, so it'd be four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars um, and some change, that would be netted to the city. If we stuck with the straight retainer option, that would mean that I would be, over the course of one year and a quarter, been paid. Uh, GPS would've got a hundred and twenty-five K, so four sixty-seven minus a hundred and twenty-five K would be, if you wanna look at that as a net, and then we, and then I'd have to take a minute to figure out the math on the commission.
You, you lost me, because we're only really talking about three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
We wouldn't be, you wouldn't be getting commission on stuff you're...
On what you've already done work on.
Okay, so then the three, so then strictly on the additional three hundred and fifty thousand from the, the new day forward, basically.
Okay, can, can I make a recommendation, Mayor? Can we stop this discussion, give Ryan some time, let's go to the next item and come back to this one? Let, give him a few minutes just to pencil some rough numbers in and say, here's what the prorata is, that's an easy one.
Yeah, I can do that.
Here's what the prorata plus the commission would be, here's about what the straight, and it's gotta be based on what you're projecting you'd see in that quarter.
Yeah, and I'd probably give you three options, including the one that's not listed that maybe the mayor would like to see. Yeah, I could figure that up pretty quick.
I can give you, I can give you the answer for option B, assuming a three-month renewal plus the, uh, the commission. It'd be seventy-eight thousand dollars on three hundred and fifty thousand versus the twenty-five thousand under, under the option A. Now, if we went to a straight commission basis, that, I don't know what your, what your rate would be, or what your, what your commission rate would be, uh, on the three hundred and fifty.
So, for example, like the, the, a lot of the figures I base off of are based on the firm that I used to work for that consulted on Aberdeen and Sioux Falls and a lot of these projects. Their fee for a project, uh, commission fee would a lot of times be around twenty-five percent. So I start my commission, if anytime I'm on a commissionable project, I'd do anywhere between twelve and a half to seventeen and a half percent. And a lot of times that range is based on if there's a retainer or not. When there's no retainer at all, it's typically higher. The max I've ever been would, would, would it be on a, on a project where it's no retainer, um, any costs that are being fronted and time that's being spent's out of my pocket, and then whatever I'm, I make, or whatever's generated, I make twenty-five percent of that. That's the max, and the lowest has ever been twelve and a half percent. And that's speaking about other municipalities in South Dakota specifically.
So, so, so somewhere on a straight commission, we'd be talking about, that twelve and a half percent, it'd be forty-four thousand roughly. Uh, up to, you said twenty-five percent, so that'd be eighty-eight, eighty-eight thousand roughly.
Yeah.
So eighty-eight under straight commi, uh, between forty-four and eighty-eight under straight commission, seventy-eight under the combined commission or the, along with the retainer, or twenty-five thousand for the flat, uh, contract amount for three months.
Correct.
Yep. Does that answer?
If, 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 as I'm calculating as you go, that's right, I believe.
Yeah.
We're talking about options that I didn't have.
Yeah, that one option here, what, uh, what was, just for the heck of it here, what, I'm trying to find it in here and I can't seem to find it, but, um, what's the retainer amount, fifty-five hundred, so you're at fifteen, sixteen, five versus twenty-five, right?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the delta difference is only nine grand.
But remember, you, under option B though, you still got the commission.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, what would, as the mayor was referencing the, that's a fixed cost, right? If he doesn't sell anything, we still got sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars, right? Um, or we have twenty-five thousand dollars. But if you sell something...
I don't like that.
Well, I'm just saying, I know what I'd do in business. I wouldn't pay him eighty-seven thousand dollars. I wouldn't do it. Because we better hope by now that he has a darn good feeling where he's at. And why is he gonna work for us? Because I'm gonna guess you wanna do work for us again, right? And, or continue, continue or at a...
Yeah, 'cause I put in a lot of, a lot of work and, and got through the hurdles, or now we're at the point where, particularly at the wellness center, we've got to the point where we can have success and are starting to see success.
And, and let's, another thing is, it all depends on the terms of any agreement you get. You could get agreements that we don't start getting paid till twenty nineteen, which is gonna be likely the case with softball fields, correct? Why would they pay for something that, by the time it gets around to it, it's gonna be done?
Yeah, it depends how quick we could get up signage, so we could have it, that's, it could be, there's something where there, it'd be partial year for eighteen if you did get any this year.
If you did.
Yep.
But it'd have to happen really quick.
Yep, yep.
Right.
And that's, and that's one of those things where I've got everything as far as a presentation, marketing materials ready to go, but we've been waiting on a handful of things.
Right, I'm just saying, the likelihood of that happening...
Yeah, likelihood of getting, you, you, I, I think you'd have a, a, okay percentage of getting a couple partners quickly. Um, so if we're looking for five partners there, I think you could maybe get two partners that would potentially give their first payment this year.
Right, so you're gonna have, probably gonna have a, you're gonna have a, a revenue issue no matter what from our budget standpoint. So I think we would need to sit down and, and figure out where that money's coming from, no matter what. But I know what I'd do in business, uh, having had you here almost a year now. The difference between a guaranteed minimum of twenty-five versus sixteen, and if you, and the sixteen means we're gonna add another many thousands of dollars on that for commissions, I'm going with my fixed twenty-five, I know my cost, and I'll come up with the money.
If some of your clients have paid twelve percent straight commission, why would we pay sixteen thousand plus fifteen percent commission?
I've had, I've also had clients that have paid twenty-five percent, and it depends on the retainer. So when this option was proposed a year ago, there was, uh, but, there was various options laid out, and the decision was, we have what looked like at the time, there's three complexes, this is gonna be a lot of work. The, the amount of commission could add up significantly. And now we're actually seeing that start to happen. So if we would've taken the commission option and these four partners plus the additional two we're gonna aim to get, and then the five that we're gonna look to get at the softball complex, would've all came to fruition, let's just say, in one month and one quarter, the amount the city would pay me would've been exponentially higher if we would've done the commission route versus the, only the retainer, which is, again, an option that I offer, but, um, it, it was made as an option so that way if, if you guys wanted to kinda mitigate the risk of, all right, so if we're gonna hit these goals, which we're well on the way now to hitting it, just took a lot longer than I expected, um, or planned. And, and for, for various reasons, so. We're getting there now, and I think that, again, I think that the, the city will come out well ahead. The, the timeline is something that I have, unfortunately, just had to, had to work around, and, and now we're, we're, again, we're to the point of starting to see these, the dollars come in and start to see the revenue that you guys did expect, so.
Yeah, so we had a year contract and we, we got a hundred and seventeen thousand plus, um, some in-kind.
Correct.
And, um, you're asked, what we're looking at is a, one more quarter.
Yep.
Um, and then possibly extending it out quarter by quarter, but is it reasonable to...
Month by month.
Okay, to extent, to expect that we'll see something within a quarter?
Yeah, to be honest with you, if, if, if certain, you know, roadblocks that we faced didn't come up, um, this would've all been pushed ahead, and I don't know that, now that there's not an ice arena at the discussion table today, that we would even be having this conversation. It would've just been, hey, you know, thanks for the good work, because there were a lot of things that, um, as part of being a consultant that I, I worked on that were, uh, maneuvering around things to make sure sales could get executed. And now we're, we're at that point, and there were, you know, a, a pipeline of over six hundred prospects was developed and marketing materials were developed, and dozens upon dozens proposals went out. So there was no lack of effort, and, and you know, as far as from my standpoint, I was here at least two weeks of every month throughout this entire proposal, which is more than any other client I have. So I, I, it's not for lack of effort, we just had some challenges. And again, now we've got to that point where I wanna see it through, and we, you know, we went, we went, essentially went... And again, now we've got to that point where I want to see it through and we, you know, we went, we went, essentially went from zero to four sponsors at the wellness center in a matter of a month after we got through some challenges and now we could get to that six, which is kind of our magic number. And then if we could get five, which is I think the right number for the premier, or the, the premier softball complex, not only would that be good revenue for there, but it would also kind of balance that less is more, the aesthetically nice facility. So, that's, that's, that's why I want the other, the additional quarter is, cause then I think the, the bang for the buck is, is there and it, you know, I, I don't want my credibility to, to be left at the wayside when it, when, um, that's, this is what I do, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, this would be the first project that if I, if we stopped now, I probably wouldn't look the greatest and I don't want to just barely above break even, you know, I'd much rather give you guys three or four times your, your investment.
Mayor, does it, or probably a Ryan question when it is a mayor question, but does this have to be decided upon tonight or could we do this at our next council meeting? This is really your question.
Yeah, so I think that based on the fact that there are another option or two that may have came up, um, I've made it a point to say it's, it, when I, it's, I'm on a good, I'm in good faith with the city, so I'm not trying to do anything that's take it or leave it, decide tonight. So, I think that as long as we could do it in the next, so that'd be next month or in two weeks, yes, we could do that.
Some of the numbers aren't adding up as I'm looking in here, Ryan, that's why I think it's best if we have discussion as to the logic of some of these.
Okay.
And also give you the time to take a look at these numbers and the third option.
When I think.
I think we need to look at those numbers.
I agree and some of the materials I, I've sent out, I don't know if this is it or if they got circulated a little too late, because I think they got circulated too late to hit the agenda. So, maybe, um, because we had to adjust some things, so, um, I'm more than willing to have something in the next few days, ready for everybody to have a couple of weeks to review even.
I, I, I'm okay with that if you are, we've, we've been stringing you along now for a couple of months as far as doing something, as, as far as renewing this or extending this. I mean, it's, it's, it's your call to make as far as I'm concerned, I mean, if you're, if you want to give us a couple more weeks, I mean, we would definitely appreciate that, uh, to make sure we're all on the same page. But at the same token, I realize you've gotta, you've gotta make decisions too on your end, Ryan.
Two weeks, I, I would much rather you guys, I'd rather make a, a decision with everybody having the material and the numbers and stuff that they would, would need than.
Right, and, cause here's where I'm just quick numbers and then, then just to show you where all of a sudden my little red flag goes up. If we were to pay you the, the commission, the 5,500 bucks, or I'm sorry, the, the, uh, retainer plus your, your suggested 15%. And if you were successful with the 350,000 dollars, that would be about 68, almost 69,000 dollars, which represents over 20% total. If you wanted to dump that over to what you're getting paid, you're getting over 20%.
And that.
I wonder if that's a fair and realistic number from our end, when, when I hear you say that some of your, your clients are at 12%, 12 and a half percent and this number is at 20 plus.
The, the ones that are 12 and a half percent, their retainer reflects that, so that one is reflective of where that retainer would be, so.
Oh, that included a retainer with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I just think if, if two weeks isn't good, we just need to commit to getting this thing done and understood within two weeks. We probably would have to take a look at each individual, uh, option and look at where those dollars would come from. Cause even if we go commission, the likelihood of, of us having income enough to pay him isn't likely gonna be there. So, you're gonna have to come up with money no matter what anyway. So, I think we need to, let's just take a look at that, sit down with finance, look at the three options, do calculations, let Ryan not be on the spot of coming up with the option three. Let's sit down, take a look at it and commit to getting this done in two weeks.
I'm absolutely open to, you know, counter proposals as well.
But, but I think we, we would need to see a, a third option or an option C though, that would be strictly, uh, commission based.
I can do that.
Because, because B is a hybrid and I think if, if we're really gonna compare, uh, guaranteed with a commission, we need to see, know what that commission option would be.
Yep, I'll do that and I'll give you guys more than a week notice, so that way you can, if you want to come back with any sort of counter proposals or hybrids among hybrids, we can do that.
Cause our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, correct?
Would that be the 20?
Yes.
18th.
18th.
No, the.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
It could be on the finance meeting a week from Wednesday. So, I make the motion to, uh, table this.
What do we do?
amended motion.
Do we, do we table or what do we do?
I think we just reject and, yeah.
Well, I would, um, I would mo, I'd make a motion to postpone action until the 18th.
I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion, it was my motion originally, I'll make that motion to postpone.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Danforth to postpone.
To the 18th.
To the 18th.
Right.
Alright, is there a discussion about that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
That's alright, no, thank you, I appreciate, appreciate the candid.
Ryan, Ryan, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, over here, over here. I would just, do you have a formal, uh, contract as well or is it just a proposal? What, yeah, if you could.
We have, we have a formal contract in place and then we can just, I, I can sit over both. A proposal with the three options and a revised.
Okay.
Formal, is that what you mean?
Yeah, just so we can take action on that as well at the same time, that way it's all done at once, right.
Right, cause now, Ryan, this delay on our end here does, doesn't stop you from working on our behalf for the next two weeks, cause you're still under contract through the end of June, right?
Correct, I already have a plan.
Yep, good, alright.
Alright, thank you. Item number 19 is authorization for the mayor to direct the South Dakota Department of Transportation to proceed with an enhanced lighting project on Highway 212 Phase 2. And, um, this went to the municipal utilities board and they have agreed to offer the city a 20-year, um, amortization of costs, more or less, so that they increase the rental for our traffic light, the, excuse me, the street lighting. Which would amount to, um, upwards of $600,000 over a 20-year period of increased cost for this. Now, the way other communities have been successful in getting upgraded lighting is by donations from businesses, because it, it, it does make a difference in how the community appears. And the reason that we're even considering this is, is because the H2020 Subcommittee for Beautification, um, wanted to make some enhancements along the 212 corridor. Because they're rebuilding the highway in the next few years. Virtually every other thing that, that they threw out as a possibility was, um, failed for one reason or another. So, this is kind of the last thing to consider and it does have a pretty hefty price tag along with it. So, um, if the council were to approve this tonight, um, we would likely look for donations from the community and we'd have a few years to, um, get the money. But if we failed, the, we, we're gonna have this big price tag that we're gonna have to pay somehow and municipal utilities has offered to pay that upfront. With the city paying them back over a 20-year period with through, um, or an increased si, um, street lighting rental fee. So, um, I would look for a motion and second for approval and then we can discuss it some more. Moved by Councilwoman Manti. Second by Councilman Vilhauer, okay, discussion.
I, I've been the one probably closest to this on this group and I also sat in on the municipal utility board meeting last week where this was discussed. And there was a, a group of us that met in the interim, um, Adam, you were part of that group, Mayor, you were part of that group as well, a few others, uh, I think Matt and Colin, you, you were part of that conversation as well, along with utility people. This, this is our one and only chance to do something different out of the ordinary on that quarter coming into town. I don't argue that it is a, got a pretty hefty price tag associated with it, um, at finance committee last week. Kristen suggests that if we are gonna do it, maybe we're better to pay the cost, our, i- if we can't get the outside funding generated. Kristen pointed out that this would come out of our CIP, uh, project fund that would allow us a couple of years to accumulate funds for it. Versus if we have the utilities pay for it and then we've got to pay a, a rental or a user fee, it would come out of our general fund. But nonetheless, does have a hefty price tag with it. I, I have been in contact with the H2020 Subcommittee since last Wednesday now and they're just on standby as far as what we decide tonight, if we want to go forward to, go forward with this. Just for what it's worth, I was in Brookings, uh, last Thursday night and that's kind of a comparison that we've been making, uh, as we look at this project. And I, I couldn't help but, but note especially as I was leaving or we were leaving, it was dark, uh, the, the extra ambiance or whatever you want to call it along that corridor in Brookings where they did have some in-hand street lighting installed. And then comparing that when I pulled into Watertown 45 minutes later, uh, compared to what we have for, for street lighting and the options that we might now have. So, it's something I'd like to see as considered, but at the same token, it's, it's got a hefty price tag associated with it. So, with that, uh, you know, open up for, you know, other comments we might have here.
Councilman Lalum?
The other thing that we did talk about, um, was on that second section from 81 to 20, was changing some coloring on the light poles, cause we're not allowed, we basically are past the time that we can change those. The price tag that they have, that's, it's not a set in stone either, and we have some options as far as changing some different designs and stuff like that. That is basically a rough estimate of what they've come up with using, I believe Brookings is.
Yes.
Design, um, I was up in Aberdeen last week, they have done the similar thing to their downtown area as well, completely changes their look as well. The price tag that goes with it is extremely expensive as it sits right now, um, but it, you, you really get one shot to change it. That's the one thing that you kind of have to look at, um, I mean, when's the last time they redid the Highway 212? I mean, I, I cannot remember, it might be 30, 40 years ago, 50 years ago?
Right.
So, I mean, you're gonna get a one in 50 year time, so, um, the expense is something that can be looked at and we haven't, uh, really narrowed anything down for sure. We just have looked at Brookings as the option, uh, just because they recently did theirs.
Right, theirs was very recent, but other communities have done this and.
Yes.
Like you said, Aberdeen, Rapid City had the recent project where they did it.
Red, Red Wing, Minnesota, yeah.
Right.
So, it changes, it changes the look of a town drastically.
And, and that H2020 visioning process, that was a resounding desire to improve that entry corridor into our community, Highway 212 is the way people, it's where people get their first impression of Watertown, that's a highly traveled road.
Yeah, we have, we have other projects we need to do as well, so I don't want to diminish those projects either that come from it. I know that, uh, the ice arena is one that has been kicked around for a while, uh, I know that people are talking about that. It's, this is, this is something that we have a couple of years to deal with, um, you know, and it, basically we can fundraise privately as well as maybe a, a co-op between the city and, and private entities to, to try to make our town look significantly different.
Right.
But our decision is based on the assumption that the city's gonna pay it all.
Right, because if, if all else fails.
Because we don't know what's gonna happen, we do know the worst-case scenario is we would have to pay for that. I, a couple of comments, um, first of all, I, you know, I do agree that without question, um, something like this can change the feel of a community, especially for those outside coming in and what they, what, how they perceive our community, there's no question on that. But in most cases, it's part of a bigger plan and I don't see that for Highway 212. Because you put up all these nice little lights and we still have the clutter that exists up and down 212 from 19th to Highway 81. And that's the signage. It, 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 there's a complete difference, Brookings, if you look at it, they have a divided highway that's there where they did theirs, plus they have the service roads. So, it's much more wide open, so you have the chance to see the lights and feel the lights, ours is gonna be tucked in amongst all the signage. There's no way, excuse me, there's, there's no way, unless we have a bigger plan, I find it difficult to spend the $600,000, I really do. You're also asking me to look at something and we keep referring to Brookings, I don't know what Brookings lights look like. I have no idea, I can envision what it might look like, but I don't know, so you're asking me to, to say yes to $600,000 expenditure that I don't know what we're actually committing to in regards to what we're gonna get. So, as I sit here today, if it was part of a larger plan, that it was gonna take phases and we actually were gonna make significant improvements in that stretch of 212, I'd be all for it. But I don't think arbitrarily putting lights up there is gonna accomplish what people are gonna want on Highway 212 there, or what, what they're actually looking for. That's my opinion.
You probably know, we're not done tweaking our sign ordinance, we're working on it and the billboard part of it, which you're referring to, um, hasn't been tweaked yet. And I, I agree with you, I would like to see that fixed, um, and soon, because we're gonna be moving signs and that's the time to do it. When those signs come down, we should have any revised ordinance in place that, that would go a long way to improve what it looks like coming in.
And Mayor, I don't, no disrespect, but it's not just, well, you know my opinion about billboards, especially in that area within town, but, but it's not just the billboards, it's just our, some of our standard signage and what we have, it's just everywhere.
Yes, I'm not just talking about billboards.
Yeah, okay, you'd mentioned billboards, that's why I was, okay.
One of the things.
Um, again.
In touch because.
You know, again, you know, we, we tried to take signs out of the right of way and we, and we've, you know, little signs out of the right of way and you, and you get met with a huge amount of, of, uh, criticism on those things, so we don't know where we're gonna get on, in ordinance or when. Again, I, I wish I knew that it was part of a bigger plan that I could buy into, but I haven't seen one. And that's where it becomes hard for me to say, sure, let's, let's put the $600,000 into the lights, that's where I'm struggling. And then it doesn't include from Highway 81 to Highway 20. You know, so now we got a section that doesn't come from the interstate to 19th, doesn't involve those, right? It's only from 19th to 81.
Right.
So, I got one strip, so if I'm coming in from the west or I'm coming in from South 81 or North 81, I may never see those things. If I come in from the east and I get off on Willow Creek Drive, I don't see those things. So, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's a hard bite for me, it really is, because I think we have a lot of projects. I also look at, somebody had mentioned the ice arena, we're gonna come into the funding, well, 600 grand going towards an ice arena. That's a pretty significant bite out of that one. So, that's where I'm at, I'm struggling with it, I'd love to be able to do it, but I'm not convinced it's the best use of our dollars. Even though it's a great opportunity right now, it's from the city who starts working with the state.
Really is the only opportunity, we won't have the opportunity again, so.
Just to clarify for those that might be joining in late in this conversation, why we're discussing this now when it's not gonna happen for another two or three years. It's because the state DOT needs to know what our decision will be, uh, and that we're somewhat under the gun time-wise. That's why we're talking about it tonight, even though, uh, it's not gonna happen for some time. And that would give us some time to, to, to work out whether it's a, a bigger plan or funding from outside sources in the meantime. But that's why we're having the conversation tonight, is because the DOT needs to know what our decision's gonna be.
Councilman Albertson?
I agree with that, I think that we need to look at it now and if we have other issues, then we have to address them. But if we pass this up and the DOT goes by us, then here we're gonna sit without that opportunity. So, I, I think we have to do, and, and we'd have, like Kristen told us last week, we'd have two years, three years to be getting this money. And I think it's right, we should count on doing that ourselves, it'd be great if somebody'd step up, but we want people to step up for the signage for the Prairie Lakes Wellness Center. We want them to step up for softball field, we want them set up, step up for the hockey rinks, I want them to step up for. I want them to step up for chairs in the arena. You know, we're asking this community to step up. I don't think we can count on that. I think we have to take the step here.
Right.
And make it work then. If we don't have a good-looking highway, then we need to figure out how to make it a good-looking highway.
Right, and it, it's impossible to know what all of your constituents want. This hasn't gone to a vote, and you have to be plugged in and, and, I mean, relying on Facebook is probably not the wise thing to do. It's, it's probably not representative, and I, I feel for the council. I, I may or may not get to vote on this, and anybody that's listening, this council has a very, very difficult choice to make, and they, they have to take what they know about what the community has said and try to project what's right for our community and, and what's best, without knowing, without having a crystal ball, what difference it's really going to make. And we know it'll have an impact. Is that impact worth the amount of money that we'll have to raise to put toward it? That's a tough question. That's a really hard question. And however you vote, I respect your opinions, I just want you to know that ahead of time. I know it's tough. And we, we do have the visioning process. That's what I look back on. That was a, a very enthusiastically undertaken process of weeding through everything that our community wants and prioritizing it. And enhancing the look of Highway 212 was huge. It was a very important part of the vision process, so keep that in mind. Anybody else want to say anything?
I guess I just would add on to what both you and Dan said in that I always feel that at some point, we can overthink the what ifs and how ifs and, and the money, but I do go back also to the visioning process and the things that have already been done to try to improve the look, and I believe we should also plan for it rather than ask people to pay for it, but it's very possible. This has been a generous community in the past, and, you know, I understand where you're coming from too, Mike, as far as who sees what, but that doesn't mean that in this two-year period of time, we can't fix the sign ordinance and we can't finish some of the master plans. There are streetscape plans, there are all kinds of other things that have all been being worked on as part of this visioning process, and I think the key here now is to start plugging them together and bringing them together. And if we skip a piece at a time where we might not have another chance for 50 years, I guess I feel like we are selling Watertown short then. If we're talking, already talking about Brookings has this, and Aberdeen has this, and Red Wing has this, and this thing has this, this is just the same discussion we've had since I've moved here about like, why don't we have this and why don't we have that?
What is your community's self-esteem?
Exactly, exactly. And, and I, I really think that it is a big amount, but what is the, what is the appearance, the self-esteem, the attractiveness and the appeal of our city worth? What is it worth to us? What is it worth to the community? What is it worth to all those people who spent, I don't know how many hours on the visioning process as part of that? And they really did boil down to, I think, our answer to this question, and that was make 220, 212 look better, including the signage, and this is our shot right now at the lighting.
Mayor, I've got a question, because I've heard it several times here. This is our one shot for the next 50 or 60 years. What does that mean? Does that means if we, if, if we put up, let's just say we go with standard lights today, are we, are we really talking about missing out the, the, the state's contribution to this, which is 100 and what, 50 grand or 60 grand?
Yeah.
Is that really what we're talking about? Or are we talking about?
It's a little bit more than that. It is, yes, that cost will have brand-new lights that we abandoned, so that will be a lost cost, and then we'll have the same amount whether, you know, we have that lost cost or not. Plus, we may have to acquire some different land because the placement of these lights is going to be different. The state is going to give us the cheapest alternative possible, the tallest lights because they spread the light the farthest, and they're basic, and they look like, you know, the cheapest option. And we can go with that and save ourselves half a million bucks. That's a lot of dough to save. But it is also, when you look at how much we spend on our community, and it, you can look at it as an investment in a projection of who we are as a community, and what do we want to look like?
Keep, keep in mind that this is a very preliminary cost estimate still. This could change dramatically one way or the other, and I'm not trying to.
Well, and we can control it from going up.
Yeah.
We can also make it go down.
And that's.
With different choices.
We'll know in 2020 what the cost estimate will be on our end, and they were kind enough to give us this estimate because this discussion's.
They saw what Brookings did.
Correct.
And we, we don't have the luxury of waiting for two years, unfortunately.
Yes.
We have to give them an answer.
Absolutely.
Because these lights are lower to the ground, they have to be closer together, so.
And retrofitting something like this would be astronomical and not feasible.
It'd be a waste, right.
Mayor, so how do we know what that cost is going to be in the end? You know, and we're talking in.
They'll bid it out.
In 2020, though. But how do we know what they're going to do? We don't know.
We'll tell them.
But we're saying 600,000 now, are, are we sure it's going to be 600,000 in 2020?
No, there's no guarantee. It's an estimate.
Right.
But, excuse me, are you saying that that, we can control that high number?
We can, well, no, not. It will be bid out, just like all projects are bid out. But we started with basically what Brookings did. That was our starting point, and their lights are very beautiful. We could do a pole that is black in color like Brookings, but smooth instead of fluted. And you may not even see that texture, so maybe we don't want to pay the extra for that. We could reduce the cost that way, make a simpler arm, or, you know, change a luminaire fitting. We, there are different options that, there's so many different choices. We haven't looked at that at all.
We just had to start somewhere.
We had to start somewhere.
I just think 600,000 would go a lot better towards, we've been talking Ice Arena.
Well, this isn't a question of Ice Arena or lights.
No, I know, but we, but we're asking for money and we're asking, we just had somebody up here asking for money for, we're, you know, consultant here, looking for revenue, sponsorships and that stuff, and then we're going to still go out and ask for somebody to donate for streetlights.
I believe we should, as a city, take ownership for that cost in our CIP, as I believe was discussed.
That's an option.
With an option. And if there are people who come forward, great. Again, I think that to pass this opportunity up is a, it's kind of, to me, it would feel like, so what? So you guys did all that visioning and you really wanted 212 to look nice, but, you know, we had our chance and we blew, you know, we decided to pass it by, so sorry. I, I understand the money part of it. I also understand the overwhelming participation in this visioning process, and I do think Sarah was right. It comes down to what do we think of our city? How do we feel? What kind of image do we want to project? And I get tired sometimes of defending ourselves against Brookings and defending ourselves against Aberdeen and defending ourselves against Red Wing because they all look better. I hear that all the time.
And here's a chance.
That's, that's my feeling, is that, you know.
Adam, did you want to say?
Yeah, I just got a couple of other comments. I look at this as a, not just a one-time thing, I also look at it, maybe this is something where we change our, our street lighting on the corners and downtown. You know, I mean, you, you have an opportunity. You look at what Lake Erie Tech has done, I mean, they changed their campus.
Right.
I mean, they put the decorative lights on. I understand that they have their own funding source, but you see how much different it looks around that campus versus the rest of town. I mean, I, I understand there's a lot of money involved. I understand that there's other opportunities involved, but maybe this is one of those where we start, as we're changing out streetlights, we go to something that has a better look to it, a better feel to it. So, you know, it, it is a lot of money. I mean, no matter how you look at it, it, it's a ton of money. Can we spend money on other stuff? Yes, we can.
And we do.
And do.
We spend a ton of money on quality of life in this community.
Yeah.
We always have, and, you know, every year, certain, there are things that we have in our community that cost us a million bucks a year.
Yeah.
And we pay that year after year after year, and we won't name any names, but there are things that we want in our community and things that we have in our community, and people move here because of those things.
Right.
And people like our community because of those things. They're not free, and it, you know, we, we don't have to finish the bike trail either, it's going to be big bucks. We don't have to have parks, we don't have to have rec programs, we don't have to have any quality of life things if we choose not to, but we have chosen to have those things. That's how we attract people to move here, and we can make things better if we choose. And it is, I mean, it's a high price. It is. All of these things are.
How much is that price going to matter 10 years from now or 20 years from now? I, I agree with Adam, because I drive down first, coming in from Willow Creek, and the lights change, the, the poles themselves change. Now, is that going to become a corridor into our downtown? The Willow Creek Drive is being developed, and, you know, that goes right into downtown? You know, coming in on first, the lights already change right about where LATI put that nice sign, you know, their signage and entryway? Can we continue to back up those lights as we need to replace them so that we end up with a beautiful entryway into our downtown? So when we're sitting back here 10 years from now, is anybody going to remember that we did or didn't spend the 600,000, but are they going to remember that we didn't take the opportunity we had to improve and begin to realize the process of improving?
Right, step by step.
Step by step.
And we do have a larger plan of enhancement of our community with that visioning.
Mm-hmm, we do.
Process. There are a lot of things in there that we're picking away at, new signs at the entry points and, you know.
Mayor, is there a, are there, I'm assuming there are, but are there enough detail with the state plans that would give everyone here a better flavor of what that's actually going to look like, no matter which lights we put in, right? From their end, you know, Adam has brought up Brookings here, you know, and that, and it's a completely different area than what we're dealing with here, you know, as far as the area that they did theirs in, but, you know, are we going to, are they making, taking the highway and gutting it out and putting New York, New Kerbin Gutter in and maybe putting a sidewalk on up to the curb and, and that's what we're going to see? Or is there going to be green spaces that we don't see today? Because to me, all of those things become a part of.
Right.
Of what that vision's going to be.
Well, we have new fencing that's upgraded, that's going to be going in where we have fencing along the.
Right, but I'm talking about, does the state?
We're getting new, yes, the state's putting in new Kerbin Gutter. We asked for greenery on there. That was one of the H2020 groups' things that they wanted to do, and the answer was no on that, unfortunately. We can encourage it when, as people redevelop, but as it is now, it is what it is. But, you know, you see, look at Montgomery Furniture, what that building looked like.
Yes.
Before 10 years ago, what that looked like, and what that looks like today. It looks nicer. I mean, we have been improving our community's appearance bit by bit. We didn't make them do that, but when we start investing in cleaning things up, it, there's a response, and the other businesses show in kind.
Right.
So there is that, it's contagious. Anyone else?
I agree.
We did have pictures of those lights, and I, I mean, they're, Shane had that files, and unfortunately, he's not here now, and I, I'm sure Colin doesn't know where that stuff is, so, that's just, sorry, can't show you that. Ready to take a vote? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of enhanced lighting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
Danforth?
No.
Lalum?
Yes.
Mantey?
Yes.
Solon?
No.
Billhauer?
Yes.
Y?
Yes.
Six to two. Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, because I, because I ended up being on the email chain with, with the state DOT with the transition in engineer office, I mean, between you and Colin, all that, looped and closed, I mean, I don't, I don't have to follow up with anybody because I was involved in some previous conversations. Do I?
You just got to let them know, we, we said yes.
Okay.
And then we'll start picking out our design.
And the state has been already contacting me on all of the 212 stuff, so.
They won't let us slide.
Yeah.
They'll keep hounding him. All right, item number 20 is consideration of change order number one with rounds construction for the landfill stormwater improvements project number 1818, increasing the contract $5,500 for a total contract amount of $406,477.18. Look for a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lalum.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mantey. As you may recall, this was recommended by the Public Works Committee, and are there any questions?
I, I can make comment. I had asked Mike about this, basically what it is, they had ran over and this was essentially their penalty, this is what they're.
No, this is.
Oh, is it not that one?
This is a different one. Colin, do you want to?
Yeah, this one is for additional, or temporary litter fence.
Oh, so much per foot, right?
Yep, yep. Up to 1,000 feet, so they came up with a contract price, or a price of 550 per lineal foot, and up to 1,000 feet, so that could actually go fluctuate a little bit down, but up to 1,000 feet.
And they have to remove the old fence and then, and they want a temporary one to stop the litter control, correct?
Yes.
And Mike figured somewhere around 750 to 800 was probably more realistic?
Feet, yeah, so it'd probably be less.
Feet, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this would be a maximum. Any other comments or questions? All right, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 21 is consideration of change order number one final with PKG Contracting Inc. for the wastewater treatment facility laboratory replacement project number 1716, decreasing the contract $1,500 for a total contract amount of $159,569. I look for a motion, second for approval.
Sure.
Moved by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Danforth, and this is probably the one you're thinking of.
Yeah, yeah.
Colin, you want to give just a brief summary?
Yeah, so they did end up going over on their time limit on this one by a total 17 days, but a lot of that was unforeseen circumstances. So I was not involved in this one, but Shane was in the negotiations, and Mike was as well with HR Green. And they agreed to extend the contract by 14 days and then penalize them for three days at $500 per day. So that's where this $1,500 comes from.
And this was recommended by the Public Works Committee?
Yes, it was.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 222 is old business. Is there any old business? 23, oh, excuse, oh. Mr. Mahol, do you wanna come to the microphone? State your name for the record.
My name is Pat Mahol. I'm coming in regards to Pheasant Lane, which we've been talking about. And I thought we had a deal cut with Brandy. And, and when I talked to her on Friday, she said that there would be a recommendation coming from the engineering department or, you know. So, what I've requested is, I've got I've got lots that I bought thirty years ago, and the plot that was laid out was done forty years ago. It's on the west side of the lake. I own two lots that I have not been able to get access to. And it's kind of a crazy thing. And I, and I've been before the council, I think this is my third or fourth time regarding this. And my request is not, the, the, there's been so many different requests of me. The most ridiculous was that I opened up a road known as Grouse Lane, curb, cutter, blacktop, and sidewalk of that project to go in a hundred and eighty feet and another hundred and eighty feet so I can get out my lots. And I would have to pay the whole cost of that. It's not realistic at all. And we, the last one that I heard about, and I talked on Friday with Brandy, was that they would go along with putting, um, right, or, um, access off of one thirty-nine on, to, to my lots. And, um, and that's where I stand. That's where I, I came here to, to, thinking that I was going to get that approval. Just based on a conversation we had last week. Colin, I don't know if you've had any chance to, to go over it with her or what.
I guess I didn't know that there was any more discussion as of last week. But we did kind of discuss this in a roundabout way, kind of, based on the speed limits, which was a discussion here coming up on, on our new business. And as of today, there is no access, allow any additional access to the lots
And that was
off of North Lake Drive.
That's recorded in the annexation resolution.
That is correct.
So, that, I mean, the council can reverse that, but the staff cannot.
No, I understand that.
And so, in order for them to reverse it, we have a, a pretty longstanding policy of not allowing driveways to be connected directly to collector routes, which that clearly is. Clearly, there are tons and tons of driveways. And this was, you know, those driveways were approved many, many years ago. Some of those plats are a hundred years old. And the reason for not allowing access is for safety. And we did talk about it recently. The next item on the agenda is new business, and we have a little diagram of what the speed limits do around the lake. If the speed limit were reduced in that area, then it wouldn't be as unsafe to have direct access with, you know, however many lots there are. Everybody gets their own driveway directly onto the collector road, which even in the nineteen seventies, they, they didn't feel that was appropriate. And, um, we, it, it's, I think, inappropriate to ask the council to act verbally on anything. They, they really need, this is, seems like a no-brainer probably to someone who owns the lot and didn't realize. The city doesn't build roads for people. A lot of people think that the city goes around and builds roads for people, which we don't. Our ordinances say that developers build the roads, and then the city takes them over and maintains them. And so, here we have a plat where the road never got completed. So, should the taxpayers build the road, or should we just forget the plan to have access at a few key locations and just let them do it all up and down a hundred different lots? That's a pretty important action that the council would take, which would change the direction of how they've been going. So, it isn't that the, they haven't been paying attention to it. It's just a really tough, tough question to answer. And that's why, I mean, it's been struggled with for decades. And really, it comes up over and over again. And action isn't taken because it's kind of a watershed change to how we do things. People up and down Nineteenth Street in the newly platted areas don't get to have driveways on the Nineteenth. In the old part, when there used to be a bridge over there that reduced the traffic on Nineteenth, it wasn't a busy road. But when they took the, the railroad bridge away, the traffic increased dramatically. And all of the plats restrict access onto that busy road. So, it, it isn't alone. Those people have wanted driveways as well, and they've been told no over and over again. That road is, is busy just like the, the road around the lake. And there's really no opportunity for alternate routes around the lake. That's
And yet, the building permits have been issued in that area, number one. With that requirement still there, that are coming off of one thirty-nine, the old one thirty-nine. There, the building permits have been issued, and then there's about ten, ten other accesses that the city did nothing with.
Very few building permits have been issued. There was one issued, and the state took action against them because they put a driveway onto one thirty-nine.
But since that, the, the city has okayed several other ones.
Just a couple in, in a couple decades. And there, just a couple of permits have been issued. There aren't very many.
Pat, to kind of fill everyone in, Brandy and Shane did write a letter to everyone, all landowners on Pheasant Lane that own adjacent property that stated exactly what Pat said, was that this is our standard. You have to meet city standard if you wanna have a building permit. And that essentially, before a building permit is in, the curb has to be established. And, um, it also said in there that he could come back to the city council and request a variance to that. And that's where, I, I don't know if that's what spurred this, and that's maybe where the conversation from Brandy came from.
I'm going on my second year of this. You know, like I said, I've been before the council. I've done everything I was supposed to do, you know, and so I, I, I don't understand.
There hasn't been consensus amongst the other lot owners. The, um, the city did ask the people who own property adjacent to the unimproved road if they would be willing, if, if the city did an assessment project to build the road for the people. And then the people would pay it back on their taxes over a period of time. And there was not consensus for doing that. Do you remember what the
Yeah, I got, I didn't get the letter. I was adjacent. I didn't get that letter. But by the same token, the letter was not overly ambitious in explaining what it was all about. You know, a, a letter went out, granted, but with very little information on it. If you owned a, one of those lots, you would've just let it go. I mean, there was, well, I don't wanna, all I wanna, all I wanna do is get access to my lots, and I can't do it. And that seems ridiculous. We would've had probably four hundred thousand dollars in buildings two years ago had something been granted. Or at least, you know, and I know where we're at. I know what's happened. I know what happened to me twenty years ago on my bank containment out there. If you remember, I was told that I had to knock my bank down because I didn't comply with the rest of the, the frontage in front of my place on the lake. They came in and took all the, the old trees and everything out. And we went from an angle about like this to an angle about like this, and to, nothing's ever come back. I asked for water, or granite. There is no granite. Why can't I have granite? Because I said you can't have granite. There is no granite. I asked for a a ramp on my property. You can't have a ramp. Why can't I have a ramp? Four dollar, I couldn't have a ramp, but four dollars down, got a ramp. So, a lot of things have been done, you know, that maybe the whole procedure is wrong. But I have never said no to the city. They asked me to come down my driveway with a sewer rather than where they were gonna pose it because it would be a better cut. I said, go ahead. You know, I've always suggested to the city, and I, and I understand a lot of things, but this development was started in, in, in the seventies. It was brought into the city in, in eighty-three. I've owned it for thirty years, you know, and like I say, there's been people that just turn around and put approaches on. That's fine. They're not supposed to do it. A big building down on the west side of my, my place. Well, that's, you know, how did that happen? Well, it did. You know, so if you, if you look at it, um, I honestly, Colin knows, I, I, I've been beside myself. I absolutely just run across a blind wall with you. I don't, don't know why it is.
It's because it's a, a very challenging question for the council, and it sets a precedent, and that's what they're concerned about. Councilman Danforth, did you have questions?
Well, I got a question and then I got a comment. So, Pat, when you say you don't have access to that, you don't have access off of, of North Lake Drive? Or you don't have access off of Pheasant Lane, or you have no access?
Pheasant Lane is not put in.
Right, but is the road bed there?
No. Well, it's, it's, there's a road bed, but it has nothing to do with
Pheasant Lane is not approved.
It's not, it's not where it should be.
The annexation resolution says that access will be via Pheasant Lane, but it was never improved. And by our ordinance, the, the road has to be in in order to get a building permit where they're getting access.
Well, now, here's my comment. On the council or plan commission board of adjustments, I've been involved for seventeen years. And this has been an issue for seventeen years that I've been on this. I think, and, and I'm, I'm speaking out loud here, but it seems to me like any actions that were taken, this is not just for Pat, but any of these, it seems like we have a tendency to look at policy and requirements and say, that's it. This thing goes way, this is, quite honestly, the reason why this didn't get done is, when it's all said and done forty years ago, it's our fault as a city. Because if that was platted and the road should've been in there, it should've been put in, and apparently, we didn't see to it that it got done. So, we kinda have to point it ourselves. And I'm saying, at some point in time, what we need to do is we need to take this area, and we gotta find a solution, and that might mean that we gotta tweak or veer from what we normally have for our standards and our policies in order to get this thing put behind us and allow people the, the, the right, effective right to use their property and get this thing developed as it, as it needs to be or can be as we define it. I know there's limitations. But we just, we seem to be stumbling on this thing all the time, and it goes back to, but that's not the way we do things. Because the road has to be in before you put a building permit. Well, we make that rule that the road has to go in. And maybe there's times, rare times, we have to make exceptions. This appears to me to be, and it's not just a Pat issue. It's that whole area. We need to come up with a solution that is not gonna be overly complicated and overly burdening for, and I'm not such, not suggesting that the, the city pay things, but I, what I'm saying is, we gotta find a solution. And you know what? Maybe we can issue building permits on a gravel road.
Well, we, the staff wants to do some sort of compromise, but it's been, they've tried to involve the people who own the property, and Pat didn't think the letter was well-written. It's not the first letter. Letters have been sent throughout time trying to figure out what people were
Okay, have we ever pulled people together like we did on, in, in a room, all together, all those landowners together, and say, let's get this figured out? Like, you know, the meetings we had on Nineteenth Street, for example, when, which was, but at least we had, everybody showed up for the most part. Have we done that on Pheasant Lane?
I, I wanna say yes. I, I think people have been invited. I think, I, I can't recall that a meeting was ever successful. Obviously, nothing was successful. But I personally have worked off and on on this throughout the years, trying to find some consensus of willingness. I mean, the staff is talking about letting them build a gravel road. They don't even wanna pay for that. And they, I mean, our standard says curb and gutter and asphalt and underground storm sewer. And the staff is like, okay, we can say gravel road. They'll promise if in the future there's a need for the rest of the improvements, that they'll pay for them. No go. And there are people out there that don't want it to develop. So, how do we do that for some, but not all? And, and how do, this, you know, it does have a precedent for other unimproved roads that we have throughout our city. This is not the only one. There aren't that many, but
I, I think, Mayor, it comes down to, there are times, and I agree with you, and I'm not, when I'm saying this, I'm not faulting your this is just where we've been after umpteen years. And, and God, I just lose sleep over when somebody brings up Pheasant Lane because it's, there's never a solution. But, you know, we, we talked about necessity of need on some of these things and some of the small projects. We may need to just figure out what we think it's gonna take to resolve this issue and, and tell it what it is, one way or the other. And just say that's what it is.
From the staff report, that's you, Colin, right?
Yeah.
Can you zoom or spread that out so, blow it up so we can read it? Just control and roll your mouse.
So, it says twenty-eight percent of the property owners on Pheasant Lane would be interested in rezoning their property to R G, which is one of the requests we had. And so, we reached out about that. And then twelve percent of the property owners were interested in improvements
To Pheasant Lane.
To Pheasant Lane.
Twelve percent. Not a very resounding majority. Not a majority at all.
Are, are owned by one person.
I don't know that it's a majority.
Far majority of those lots are owned by one person.
There is one person that owns quite a few of them, but
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think it's more than half.
I think it's forty-four percent.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
Well, whatever. You know, a year ago, when I came, I, I had a proposal with it that we addressed the, the speed limit. It's the only
We're gonna talk about that tonight.
What?
We're talking about that next.
Okay. Well, I, that was brought up a year ago, you know, as to safety. So, well, whatever. That, that's, that's my
Well, my point isn't to throw stones at anybody, but we have got to find a way to resolve this issue, and it may not be through everybody agreeing to it. We, we may just have to get to a point where we say, here's what's the most reasonable, and this is what we're doing. Because otherwise, we will deal with this, you know, it's not gonna be Pat next time. It's gonna be somebody else. I mean, I can't think of who was before us not too long ago, it seemed like, on something with Pheasant Lane again. And gosh, it just seemed like it's always coming at us. And we just need to ultimately put a stake in the ground and say, we understand what's all taken place in the past. This is what we're gonna have to do. This is how we're gonna do it. And, and we're just gonna have to
I agree with you, Mike. And, and the staff was really looking forward to putting this to bed. We were thinking a lower standard here could be acceptable, but we kinda wanted at least half of the people to want it. Twelve percent.
And what I'm saying is, is, you know, I'm on the outside looking into this thing as far as ever speaking to landowners. Once in a while, I'll get a call from somebody. But to, I'd love to reconvene a group and say, look, here's the deal. We're gonna look at this thing, and we're gonna make decisions. Please be at the meeting. If you're not at the meeting, we, then you, obviously, you don't care. If you're not at the meeting, we, then you, obviously you don't care." I mean, they can certainly, if they can't be at the meeting, they can certainly share where their thoughts are, right? And if I owned a, if I owned a property out there and I couldn't be at the meeting, I'd either have somebody at the meeting or you would understand what my concerns are, what my position is. But we have got to put Pheasant Lane to bed. We just have to. It, it makes people old in a hurry, just having to deal with this darn thing. And it's unfortunate that it's a, almost a fifty-year-old problem, but at some point in time, we just need to have the, the strength and the courage to sit down and say, and I'm not faulting the staff up here at all, I'm just saying, I understand trying to build consensus and that's how I would work it too, but at some point, if we're just not getting it, then the heck with it. Then we got to put a stake in the ground and say, "What's the most logical thing?" And it might mean we got to deviate from some of our rules, some of our...
But if you have a majority of people who just want to hold that land for the future and don't really want anything to happen there, is that an acceptable outcome to you? Because that's been the result of the inquiries throughout the past. There are a few people that really want to do something, but the, most of the people just want it to sit there and hold on to it.
I think you have to go back to the original intent, Sarah, and the original intent was that land was to be developed through the, through the Pheasant Lane. If you go back to the origin of it, the intent...
It hasn't been the city's practice, though, to develop land for people.
No, we're not developing it. I think we go back to the original intent of what that, those properties were intended for when it was, as far as its planning and its use and, because I'm assuming thirty years ago, I shouldn't assume, Pat, but that's probably why a person would, would invest in multiple lots out there from the standpoint of that its plan was for, for development. That's why Pheasant Lane went in, because it was going to get developed on both sides.
Yeah, I guess we don't know. It started to go in, there's sewer in part of it.
Right.
But that's as far as it went.
But the intent, but then the, the developer went away, right?
I don't know what happened.
But then, why would they put sewer?
I don't think the developer went away. I, actually, the original developer is a person in town that you probably know and he thought that the city was going to build the road. That was his understanding.
But his understa, forget the road. The intent was to have an area there that is eventually developed for housing, correct? Or, and now that's changed a little bit. That's the original intent. No matter who pays for what, the intent was it was going to get developed. And it was be residential area. I think we have to go back to that at some point and say, "That's what people probably way back when probably made investments on," is that that's what it was going to get developed.
They invested in land that didn't have access and I think that's been, from the moment that that was annexed, known that that road had to be built. So, anyway, I don't think we need to be...
We're going to go resolve it tonight, but I'm just saying, I, it, we have got to find a way to get this thing put to bed.
Yep. The staff would dearly like to put this to bed. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mahol. And we, the next item is related to what you're asking us about and, um, under, unless anyone else has old business to talk about. I'll move on to the new business. Item A under new business is speed limits around Lake Compeska. And, um, we have, uh, Colin, can you bring up on your computer the, under, where did Brandy put it? There it is. Nope, there's another one, um, not from the agenda. In the file, the numbers are placed on there. And there, it's in, I think it's in G, just loose in G. That's Brandy where it is. Anyway, we have varying speed limits. Just pick the most recently saved document in G at the top. I don't know. Yeah. I don't know where it is. It's in my email. See if I can bring that up. If we look at the speed limit document, we have speeds around the lake, um, anywhere from fifteen to forty-five miles per hour. It changes all the time. And we've had complaints about speeding in numerous different locations around the lake and we're actually, um, considering unifying the speed limit around the lake and wondering what the council would think of that, if in some places raise it and other places lower it for the, um, overall more uniform speed limits. And I know Glenn drove around looking at North Lake Drive, the former one thirty-nine, and, um, you want to talk about that for a minute?
Actually, Dan, you're involved, so why don't you, why don't you kick it off?
Well, I think the conversation tonight has been a great segue into what this is right now because we've had conversation about the, the trail, the bike trail out there, the safety, you know, that's such a big deal of getting that bike trail done because of safety. And there's been years of conversation about that. Then Mr. Mahol comes up and says, you know, "He can't get a road to his place because the ordinance says," which is, probably goes back to years and years ago, "that you can't enter a road onto the highway and especially you shouldn't because of all the safety issues there, getting people to come onto the road." And of course, if you go to the south side of North Lake Drive, there's road, or driveway after driveway after driveway. But there are just so many different speed limits out there. It, it goes from fifteen to twenty-five to thirty to thirty-five to forty to forty-five. And there are some really, really dangerous spots on the north and the west side of the lake and going through, it's forty miles an hour. And I think everybody has had a situation where it's been really dangerous. They've seen things that were really close. And so, from that side of it, I could say, "Well, Pat, you know what? I understand not having a driveway, but if you slow that traffic down, I mean, how would you like to have forty mile an hour over by Sunnyside or over by the prop?" You know, the speed limit there because those roads are really narrow and they're really dangerous. Now, there's open area on the north and west, but the speed limit at forty, I drove it twice on Sunday just for curiosity's sake. Forty is a fast speed limit. Now, you can get, you can go faster than that, but when you come up over one of those many hills or you go around one of those many curves, forty miles an hour is not the recommended speed. And so, why do we have forty at that level? And, and we've also had people, not just Mr. Mahol's, first time I've heard him say about the speed out there, maybe he said it last year and I've forgotten it, but we do have that speed out on forty, on forty on North Lake Drive. There are a lot of residents out there. There are, I mean, there are a lot of places where people come out of their driveways over that, my daughter used to live just west of Compeska Lodge and that you came over that hill from either direction at forty miles an hour. I'm telling you, she had three kids that could just as well have been out there on their bikes trying to get across the road. Now, nothing happened, you know, but there are, I, I think people used to just take a look at this map if you didn't get a chance before the meeting and see the variety of speeds. There's one fifteen miles an hour past the Cattail Crossing Golf Course, right by where people cross with their golf carts and walk across there. Fifteen miles an hour seems like it's turtle speed until you're out there trying to get across the road with a golf cart or walking across there with a golf bag and you see somebody coming probably twenty, even though they have the speed bumps in there because they put speed bumps because people weren't going by the fifteen. So, you know, even when it says forty, people are probably driving forty-five. And I know that the police are trying to, trying to watch that, but speed around the lake is with all these houses so close. And maybe if we can address this, we can also do what Mike suggested and address the north side of the lake as to how people could access their property on the north side of North Lake Drive. Maybe there's something that makes sense. Because I, I kind of agree, it doesn't make sense you can have property and you can't get to it. And yet, I don't know if some, like a lot of them don't want it, they just want the property. I don't know the answer to that, but it seems like there must be some answers to the speed and then just keep riding and going into North Lake Drive and figure out what to do about that. I think there's a lot of property that, Pat's right, look at all the, if we could get buildings out there, look at all the property that we could have on the tax roll. And in eighty, that was a ci, that was a county property. Here we are, forty years later, we still don't have any property that we can tax out there. We've got bare property. If you don't want to build, you don't want to build, I guess. But anyway, that's kind of an overview, I think, of, there are just a lot of different places. We've, we've had, I, I, I think Glenn and I, maybe because we're at that, out in that area, we've had people talk to us about it and just wonder, "Why do we have forty mile an hour?" Even when we put in the bike trail, if more people are using it, it's going to be even more dangerous yet if you're driving fast. So, I don't think the bike trail is going to solve, you know, it'll solve people not having to walk or ride bike on the road, but you still got speeding going on. So, I, I personally, for one thing, it's worthy to think about, and I don't imagine we'd act on it tonight, but I do think we should think about all these different speed lines and ask people who live there and drive those roads what they think. But, you know, we've got people all along where I live on South Lake Drive, they've got, "Drive like this is your child." Or, "Drive like it's your ch," I can't remember what the signs say, but we've got a lot of them, which mean the police are out there. I see the cars out there a lot. They're patrolling it and people are still putting signs out there, "Drive like it's your child," I think is what it says. Well, it's indicating that people are concerned about the, this, you know, and maybe they're driving thirty, but it seems like fifty when you're out there with your little kids, so, and they're close to the road, so, I mean, it's, it's an issue.
And, and part of the problem is that's a collector route and people have driveways right on it. And, um, do we want to further that problem because we've allowed others to do it, just let everybody do it? I, you know, and we know it's not good practice, but that's what we have. That's what we have at the lake. It's been like that for a long, long time.
Mayor, can I ask you a question on that? I know the, the original comment was is to standardize the speed, but what, that one section of Highway twenty, we're not going to do anything with, that's not our decision, right? That's going to stay at forty-five no matter what. And it should. Could we go, and Adam had just mentioned, we're kind of talking about the same thing, but it seems like if I'm driving around that lake, um, first of all, I, personally, I don't think there should ever be a forty-five or forty mile an hour zone out there, just like, but if we came off at Highway twenty where you're going to go to City Park, okay? So, South Lake Drive, all the way to the point that it hits Old One Thirty-Nine. Past Sandy Shore. And if that was twenty-five and then from that point up to, well, what is it? It was back up there to some point in, by the lodge or somewhere near there where access is Highway twenty, again, that'd be thirty. I mean, couldn't we have two speeds around the lake? It seems like that north, northwest side is a little more worthy of the extra five miles per hour than, than the south, just because it's a little less hilly and stuff, but... Well, I understand that, Dan, but then you're not going, if you say twenty-five, they're not, they're going to drive what they're comfortable with and, and I will say, and I mentioned it at our last meeting, um, I get out to the lake in the summer, that's when I mostly go out there, hardly ever out there in the winter time. And I will tell you, you know, the speeding is terrible out there. It, it is just terrible. And when I say terrible, it's like, gee, if you're driving forty and a thirty, it just seems like in those areas, that's a lot. And, but, I, I just throw that out as, as an option of twenty-five and thirty, see how it goes. You know, instead of twenty-five all the way around and, and maybe creating a speed trap, so to speak, um, see how it goes. Because like I said, that, that west end seems a little more worthy of the thirty. I wouldn't keep it at forty. In the south...
We talked to Chief McPeak about it and he said thirty would be his recommended speed also on that, from that stand from Compeska Lodge over to where you turn toward the old...
What about the other side, Dan?
And then twenty-five.
That's what seems reasonable to me.
Not anything faster than twenty-five because in the summertime, that's, uh, that's dangerous.
Well, and if you're pulling a pontoon or a boat, I mean, it's just that extra stopping power you just don't have. I mean, an extra five miles an hour, it's, you know, another fifty feet to stop with a big weight behind you, so it doesn't make any sense and to have all these different speed limits, it seems a bit ridiculous. I didn't even realize they were that different all the way around.
I felt the same way as Adam. I looked at this map and went, "Whoa," you know, but I, my feeling exactly was that there should not be any place around here that should be more than thirty-five miles an hour, you know? So, if the police and kind of the people who are representing that ward and some of the discussion, I would be in favor of trying something like that as well, what Mike suggested.
Glenn?
Um, I, I spent a, probably an hour, hour and a half out there a couple of weeks ago on a Monday afternoon, uh, along that, that north and west side. And it was amazing, all the different things that I encountered trying to drive forty miles an hour, including some of that pulled right out in front of me, had I not been watching and going forty, I would have plowed right into them. Uh, and, and that's what prompted the, uh, we had a meeting that, that Dan referenced with, uh, Chief McPeak and a few of us. Uh, Mayor, you were there just last week to discuss, I mean, we're not, I mean, I don't think we can make a change, in fact, I know we can make a change tonight, but I, I think definitely more uniformity around the lake with, I, I, I don't think it's realistic to look at changing anything that twenty-five, lower than that. Um, I think Chief McPeak would, would like that in places. I think as people that live out there, we might like that, but I don't think that's realistic. But I think definitely the, the area, the forty miles an hour, dropping that down to thirty miles an hour, uh, just for what it's worth, uh, shoot, I don't have my notes right handy now, the, the, the difference in, oh, to, to drive that stretch, that's forty. Uh, if you drive that at forty versus thirty, um, all the way, it, it takes about three minutes more to, to traverse that same, that same section of ground. Uh, for the, for the sake of the safety that's involved here, uh, remember where that came from, I think, was when that was a state highway and the state people always want to move traffic along as quickly as possible. That's where that forty mile an hour speed limit came from. That's not a state highway anymore. That's up for, up to us to control. And I, I think it's incumbent upon us for safety purposes out there to, to look at, at reducing that and that would then lend itself to more uniformity with speed limits around the lake in general. Uh, I guess we're looking, you know, suggests was maybe we want to get some public input on this before we, before we as a council make a decision. I'm not sure what the proper process is. I think this has been a controversial topic in the past and we're probably going to get fair amount of controversy generated from this conversation tonight, but to, to do nothing is not, is not an option. I mean, because there definitely is a safety, safety factor out there in that, at least that forty miles per hour area.
I agree. Councilman White?
Mayor, with Highway twenty being forty-five there, if that were to change, that would have to be the state's decision.
Right. We don't have any authority to change that.
Mayor, do you know, is there any accident data around the lake that, that would be compiled by the police or facility?
I'm sure they have data, but, um, Scott, do you want to talk about it?
You know, I'm sure it doesn't include the near misses or the concerns, but I mean, it's always a bit of data at least that can help you make a decision and...
Do we have an accident history?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that question whether there is or isn't, but, um, from my experience, I don't recall there being very many pedestrian accidents, bicycle accidents, um, car versus mailbox, car versus car, whatever the situation is. Um, it just doesn't seem like we have very many accidents at the lake.
I would have to agree with that. I, I just don't recall too many. I live out there. I don't recall hearing about accidents at the lake any more than any other neighborhood.
When we had our meeting, um, this past week, um, Chief did have a whole, a whole bundle of information based on all this different speed data. And they were, they were trying to set up if there was people actually speeding, if there was stuff going on. And I, I don't know if you can speak on that, but I know he said that, that the data actually showed not very much, um, against...
That would be my conclusion too, that there's not a lot of, uh, day-to-day crashes. The ones that I can recall, some of them were alcohol-related with speed, um, late at night type situations. But, uh, you know, as far as, like I say, somebody walking to get their mail and, and having a car crash into their mailbox or something like that, we just, we don't see a lot of those types of crashes out there. Or even, um, somebody backing from a driveway on a hill, such as you see on the west side of the lake and then, uh, you know, ending up in an accident trying to...
and then, uh, you know, ending up in an accident trying to back out of the driveway. We just, we don't see those types of crashes out there. But, um, I did have some conversation with Chief McPeak today, and, and he basically said the same thing that you have said tonight, that maybe if that forty was reduced to a thirty, um, maybe that would help the situation. But, um, of course, we'd like to see consistent speed as much as possible too. I mean, but it's just, in this situation with seventeen, eighteen miles of roadway, whatever it is around the lake, it's hard to have just one consistent speedway, uh, considering the design of the roadways and, and the types of businesses you have with the golf course and that sort of thing. It just makes sense, maybe the west side be thirty and the other side be twenty-five. And, you know, you have that small area of forty-five up on state highway.
I guess I would just rather be proactive instead of waiting for that guy to go out to his mailbox and get smacked. And in the summer, it's just, maybe it's because people have to slow down in the summer, and I don't know, you know? Or have to be more vigilant. But I know for a fact too, that if I'm gonna get a ticket, it's gonna be when it goes from thirty, no, twenty-five to forty. No, I'm just kidding. I, I agree with what everybody said, but I don't wanna wait until we have a whole compilation of accident data to make a change. I'd, I'd rather have us make a change and not have any accidents. So...
I just wanna say, I think it makes sense to me that we change the forty to thirty, and the rest would stay as is. It's posted, we got the signage, people are used to most of that, but it does make sense to me to slow that area down.
Most likely, the, the only complaint you might receive is from those that live way on the west side of the lake that have to drive to work and they don't wanna drive thirty, they'd rather drive forty. But, you know, like, uh, Councilman Bill Haller said, what's an extra two minutes on your trip to be safe and be safe for others as well?
Right.
So, what's the next step on this?
Yeah, the next step. Well, um, public input. I, I think that we would, um, need to-
Could we, could we make a recommendation that, that be done?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd make the recommendation that essentially from where South Lake Drive starts there by City Park until where it hits South Dakota Highway 139 there, that would be twenty-five. And then, from that point back to Highway twenty, you know, be thirty. And then, just ask for public input from the general public that are out there, as well as input from the police department and anyone else that would have to-
We could do a public hearing.
Yeah. I, I'd just like to see what, what people are thinking.
On a change in the speed limit.
Yeah.
For, to what you're proposing.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I would, I would-
So, it's say the, on the south side, from where to where?
From where South Lake Drive starts off Highway twenty there until where it hits 139, which is by Sandy Shore, just past Sandy Shores, at twenty-five.
Okay. Even the part that, that's thirty-five, that, that used to be twenty-five?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Just recently, like four or five years ago.
Because it's, it's, there's nothing there. It's, there are no houses there.
It's just uniformity-wise, it's, it's just easier. What is it, a quarter mile, half, half mile? I mean, it's, it's not gonna add, you might add another-
Yep. Be consistent. Everything on the south side is twenty-five.
Half a minute. Simply for consistency, I would keep it at that.
Everything on the north side is thirty, on city roads.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. And leave Highway twenty, obviously, we can't touch that, so...
Okay.
That would be my recommendation, and then I would ask for public input at the next meeting.
I would go that.
Okay.
You do have quite a few houses on, right on, you know, where the park is there, City Park. When you go north, there are a lot of houses in there now, you know, and it was when they changed it to thirty-five. But there are a lot of houses in there. And I don't know if there are a lot of kids, but there are a lot of houses. So...
On the, on South Lake Drive?
Right, but none of, none of them have driveways on it.
Yeah, they all have that.
City Park to the-
Yeah, they're impaired.
And they don't have their own driveways. They just have two entry points.
Okay, so we have, we have a recommendation, and I don't know that we need action, but we can bring that back as a public hearing for input.
I think we at the police department can, uh, appreciate Councilman Lawlum's suggestion of, at about Sandy Shores there, change it to thirty, go all the way up to Highway twenty, and then on the other side, twenty-five from off of South Lake Drive, or off of Highway twenty all the way to Sandy Shores again. So, the two speed zones, the thirty and the twenty-five. With the exception, of course, the, the golf course where it's fifteen.
Yeah. No, we won't. No.
Right.
Right. Councilman Villar?
Are you suggesting then that we take public input at a future council meeting? Or have a, have a special public meeting at some point specifically for this?
Well, I think what's, do a meeting and a public hearing?
Well, this has been on television tonight. If the mayor talks about it Wednesday, and then if we, it'll be in the newspaper. I mean, so, and on the radio, so, I, I think it's gonna get, and then if we say next time, we're gonna decide. I mean, I'd like to, if we're gonna do it, I'd like to get it going right away, rather than wait till summer's over.
We could, we could put it on the, uh, work session for next Wednesday, too.
Sure.
And then that would give them another opportunity to come in and talk about it.
And that's another opportunity to hear that there's going to be a public hearing.
Yes.
You remember that, Colin?
So, we put it on there, and then we put it on for two weeks from today as an agenda item. And we put it as the first agenda item, that way, people, yeah, they don't have to sit through the whole thing.
Good idea.
I'm sure you could put it on Facebook, too, and I bet we'd get some opinions.
I think you're right there. All right. Uh, moving on, are there any liaison member reports? Or, well, let me back up, any other new business? Any liaison member reports? There's no need to go into executive session, so I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Councilman Solom and a second by Councilman White. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.